The MyStop mobile app and MCAT, helping you on your journey.
My love for baseball comes from my Uncle Bob and back the baseball can have on our lives. It is my hope that this field will be a place where young people can learn and grow just as I did. Play ball.
I would like to make a motion at this time that this board direct the county attorney to rename draft a proclamation renaming the Manatee High Baseball Field, which is Baseball Field Four at GT Bray, the Coach John Carlock Field.
Go Canes.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, August 22, 2023. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County. We're going to start off today by honoring God, and then we're going to honor our great nation. Invocation will be led by Pastor Lucas Ashley from the Bridge Church, after which John Schwartz, who is a code enforcement officer with Manatee County, but is also a retired petty officer, second class of the United States Navy, will be here with us today. Mr. Schwartz received an Army Commendation Medal, a Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, an ISA F Medal, I don't know the acronym, I'm sorry, military acronym, so Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, a Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, Navy and Marine Corps Overseas Ribbon. He served for six years. So if you're able at this time, please stand.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for the honor of being here this morning. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much just for the blessing of your Son Jesus, the salvation that he brings to our life and the favor that we find in it. Father, this morning, we pray for the county that we are blessed to be a part of and live in. Thank you for the beautiful weather. Thank you for the blessing of growth, Lord God, even with all the troubles that it comes with at times. Father, we pray for the Commission this morning that you would just put favor upon them. We pray for each and every one of them personally, Lord God, that you would grant them wisdom and discernment and ears to hear, Lord God, as they listen to the words of the people that they lead and serve with, Lord Jesus. That you would give them the wisdom to make the decisions that are best for our community and the people that make it up. That you would give them favor both personally, professionally, and within their families. Lord Jesus, continue to bless the community that we are so blessed to call home. Thank you again for the honor of breath in our lungs and the life we get to live. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
John Schwartz, if you'd step up to the podium, sir. And I didn't read all the way to the bottom, and I apologize for failing to note that you also served this country with three deployments to Afghanistan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all that you've done for our country and also for both of you are doing for our county at this time. We're now going to go to announcements, updates, and changes to today's agenda. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir. Under awards and presentations and proclamations, proclamations, item six, adoption and presentation of proclamation designating September 10, 2023, as rendezvous Christ Church 13-year anniversary in Manti County. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Under presentations, item seven, presentation of certificate of recognition to Pastor Max DeSere, the agenda item was added to the agenda. Item nine, Manti County Summer Internship Program Project Presentation from Property Management, Community and Veteran Services, and Public Safety Departments. This item was added to the agenda. Consent Agenda, Natural Resources, item 23, execution of contract agreement between Tampa Bay Estuary Program and Manti County for Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Subelement Grant. This item, agenda item, was updated to include a revised motion. Execution of contract agreement between the Tampa Bay Estuary Program and Manti County by the Chairman for Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Subelement Grant and Authorization for the County Administrator to Approve No-Cost Amendments or Other Non-Monetary Changes to the Tampa Bay Estuary Program in Manti County for Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Subelement Grant. Under advertised public hearings, presentations upon request, public works, item 50, adoption of ordinance 23-89, Fort Hammer Road from US 301 to Buckeye Road and Moccasin Waller Road from US 301 to US 41, regulating engine compression release. This agenda item was updated to include the affidavit of publication. Item 51, adoption of ordinance 23-86, golf cart crossing on Erie Road at Marie Lane. This agenda item was updated to include the affidavit of publication. Commissioner Agenda, Commissioner Cruz, item 58, Safe Haven Baby Boxes. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Port Authority, this item was updated to include the Port Authority Meeting Agenda. Awards and Proclamations, proclamations, item five, Overdose Awareness Day Proclamation. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Regular, Natural Resources, item 51, former item number 19, adoption of resolution R23-064, authorizing execution of agreement between FWC and Manti County establishing a gopher tortoise long-term recipient site within Duette Preserve. This agenda item was moved from Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda. Development Services, item 53, former item 45, acceptance of donation in value of $13,588.96 from SOAR and FOR for story walk program boards to be installed at Lincoln Park. This agenda item was moved from Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda. Under Attorney, item 55, discussion of finalists for County Administrator. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Sir, that's all my updates.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, Consent Agenda, are there any items that you would like to request be pulled from today's Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will not be pulling any items. Moving on then to the Port Authority. So we'll recess this meeting, and Commissioner Cruz will open a Port Authority meeting. We're in recess.
You kick us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Port Authority members. Thank you for taking us in at this time during a regular county meeting. As you know, sometimes we have a light agenda like today, except for the budget. So it's beneficial that we have you here at the same time, so you don't have to go to the port unless there's something very, very, very important that I need you to be there for. So as a result, Mr. Chairman, I would look for your consideration for the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any item you wish to pull from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain motions to approve the Consent Agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Ron, a second by Commissioner Satcher. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Madam Clerk, it is approved unanimously. Move on to number two. This is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. We will need a motion on this once it's presented. Not sure who in staff is presenting or if you're even doing a present formal presentation.
Just giving a heads up, we might need to ask for public comment at this time, too.
Oh, that's right. I forgot. We need public comment for Consent Agenda. Is there anyone who wished to speak on the Consent Agenda items for the Port Authority? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll open number two for the budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I prelude to the budget presentation, you know, the port continues to be a major employer in Manatee County and surrounding counties, continues to be an economic engine for the whole region. We're seeing more and more volume of cargoes, whether it's road construction materials, lumber for the homes, appliances, fruits and vegetables. So the port continues to operate like it did even during COVID, 24/7, 365, and we're very proud of that. This year's budget looks approximately the same as last year. We need to go after some new business, which we're working on right away, some business that left for some neighboring ports, like I advised you this morning, and we plan to get that business back and add to that business to grow the port even more. From, as you will note later, from the, from the perspective of finances, you know, the cover ratio, the service cover ratio on the bonds continues to be very high. It's supposed to be 1.1, and we have it at over 8%, or sorry, 8 points. So we're doing good there. No need for the bondholders to be in any way alarmed at this time. So I'm going to introduce our CFO, Denise Stufelbein, who's going to go over, who's going to go over the budget with you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Denise Stufelbein, Director of Business Administration and Finance. I only have three slides on the budget, followed by Dan Fitzpatrick. He's our Director of Planning, and he will go over our 24 CIP. But before we discuss the 24 budget, does this work? I'm trying to go to the next. Thank you. Before I discuss the 24 budget, I wanted to go briefly over our 23 budget and our year-end projections. So we budgeted 25.2 million, and we are on track to finish 23 at 25.3 million. That includes over 400 vessel calls for nearly $15 million. Our largest customer's bringing in petroleum and dry bulk cargo. Leases, 4.2 million. Our storage, we have cargo throughout the port. There's lumber, aluminum, containers, and that makes up our storage revenue. And then our security fees are, includes nearly 10,000 security escorts and monitors. Those are provided by our security staff, which runs 24/7. So we are ending fiscal year 23. It's another great year for Seaport Manatee. And next slide, please. Okay. For our 24 budget, we're proposing 25 and a half million. We're basically holding the revenue flat from last year. This was based on conversations with our customers who feel, who anticipate the volumes to be the same as this year. Some anticipate higher volumes, but we decided to budget conservatively and budgeted 25 and a half million. Now, our expenses are budgeted with an overall increase of 23%. 16.2 million up from 13.1 million. We're budgeting 10 new positions, five in security, one is a compliance manager, which has been vacant for a while, four entry-level security officer positions, four in maintenance, two for facilities, one HVAC, and one mechanic, and one engineer position. We follow the county with a 5% merit increase. And then the other line items in the operating expense for the cost of running the port, basically an across-the-board increase based on today's market. I know that was quick. That's my presentation, but I know you guys have a busy day ahead, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I can turn it over to Dan.
Are there any questions? No, you did a great job. That was good.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Dan.
Good morning. Dan Fitzpatrick, Manatee County, Director of Planning and Project Development at Seaport Manatee. And Seaport Manatee's mission is to, short and simply, to be an economic catalyst for Southwest Florida and Central Florida. And in 2021, we created $5.1 million of economic impact annually, created 35, over 35,000 jobs in the region, and 4,000 jobs at Seaport Manatee. So giant economic impact for the region and the state. And so, so one of, one of the ways that we focus on making sure that we're an economic catalyst for the region is through the development of a master plan. And in February of this year, we updated our 2022 master plan for Seaport Manatee, and we identified over 26 major projects in the plan to make sure that we have a strategic approach for investing in the port to maximizing our economic impact at the port for the next 20 years. And so, our, our capital improvement plan, and I believe, believe we have one slide. Our capital improvement plan is, is our short-term approach for implementing our long-term master plan. So every single year for the next 20 years, we're going to identify projects that help us implement our, our master plan to make sure that we stay on track, that we're consistent, that, that we, we achieve the goals that we set out, out in our master plan. And the, the projects that we have up here are, are major projects that we're going to focus on over the next year. And some of these you'll recognize from last year that we're continuing to work on. We're, we have some major projects that we're working on, some big projects, and we also have some minor projects. And, and this is really the full gamut of how we're investing in the port over the next year. And so I'll throw out three examples. Our berth four extension project, we've been working on this for, for now four years, and we're one phone call away, hopefully, from starting on this project. We're just waiting on one more piece of paper. And this project will restore capacity at the port and also give us capacity to take other berths out of service over the next 20 years. And that, that's a big project for us. And another project is our intermodal container yard. We received an infra grant last year from US DOT, and we're going to start design in the winter and hopefully start construction next year and be done in 18 months. And that will give the port enough capacity through 2041. And then probably for just a third example is we have bollard restoration up here. It's the second line from the bottom, and we're continually, continually evaluating our infrastructure at the port to make sure that it's in the best shape for our customers. And our engineering department commissioned a study of all of our fenders and bollards this last year, and that study identified some, some upgrades that are, are needed in the next five years. And so we're going to start knocking those off over this next fiscal year. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Anyone have any questions relative to the CIP for the port? No. I'll ask you a question. We've got $47 million worth of CIP here for this coming year, but, but clearly the, the long-term vision of the port has a substantially higher CIP with, with the, the additional berths and the expansions for the, the new sizes of ships and so forth. What's holding us back from moving forward with those bigger CIP? Because, because you said are from a bonding, from a bond covenant, we're 80 debt service coverage, and we need to be 1-1. So clearly, we have the capacity. We've also been working very hard up in Tallahassee with various sources of trying to get more grants, and you're doing very well. I mean, a, a big chunk of this is via grants from the federal and state, but there, there's other money available if we were prepared to match it and move forward. So it's not cash holding it back. Is this strictly a, a matter of, is it manpower? Is it getting licenses? Is it Army Corps engineers? I mean, what's holding us back from being able to, to really expand this port the way you envisioned it being expanded?
Sure. So just going back to our berth four project, our berth for the audience is a parking spot for ships. And in order to take a parking spot out of service for rehabilitation, which takes at least 18 months, you need to have another parking spot for that customer. And so this berth four project, when berth four and five were built, they were built and designed for the ships, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And, and now that berth, if you come out to the port, it can only fit one ship. So by, by rehabilitating this berth, we're going to make berth four longer by 600 feet on the north, and we're going to make berth five longer by approximately 25 feet on the south. And that's going to give us a whole new parking spot that we haven't had before. And then after that, we'll, we'll move on to berth 10 and rehab berth 10, which is over 50 years old now. And then once we rebuild berth 10, we won't have to do that again for 50 years. And these, these berths are expensive. Just to give you an idea, if you're talking about a thousand-foot-long ship, you, you can multiply that times $25,000 a foot minimum. So it, in addition to the time, you're also talking about cost and lining it up and, and doing that at the same time that you're also keeping track of other, other projects and other needs at the port.
And there's also another, another aspect, Mr. Chairman, is that as a business that you're running, as a port authority, you're running a business. We don't want to get too much ahead of the, of the need to fill the capacity that we're building. So there's a three P factor, where we want to bring in private equity, private capital to help us with projects, and also customers who will use the facilities, not just build them for the sake of waiting for five years for somebody to do it. So we try to time that, and that's one of the factors holding us up, that the, the customer for us has to be near the port in terms of the ability to match the investment or use the facility. So if we invest $5 million, we want to see a revenue stream very quickly. And so that's part of what sometimes holds us up, finding the customer to fill the capacity.
Understood. But as we discussed, I mean, there's, there's some customers that are becoming so large and utilizing our port so much now that they want dedicated space, and we need to be able to accommodate potentially one company having an entire berth, which right now we have a harder time allowing for.
Correct, exactly. And, and that's, you know, we're fortunate in that, in that the port needs to grow, as you're saying. The port needs to grow to accommodate the growth in the community. Ports serve regions and areas. In, in our area, as we all know, is growing dramatically. And, you know, we're delivering the commodities, the port authorities delivering the commodities, the products that these, these new residents and, and current residents are using every day. The port touches, you know, every home, I think, in, in Manatee County and beyond, every day, whether it's fruits, vegetables, lumber, gas for their cars, everything. So we would need to grow that, as you just saying, to accommodate that expansion.
All right.
I have a question, actually.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Along with Commissioner Cruz's question with the development. So if we renovate these berths, your long-range forecast, renovating them is going to give us the capacity we need long range, or will we need new berths?
We will look to do both, renovation and expansion. So the extension of berth, a berth is a new berth to accommodate. And to us, you know, it's like runway length at an airport. You know, we can do a 747 with a five-foot, you know, 5,000-foot runway. So we're extending the capacity and also rehabilitating existing capacity, because many of those berths are 50 years old.
Yeah, I mean, after visiting the port and you guys giving your presentation, I just think we're just scratching the surface on the potential, the business development side.
Tremendous potential for several reasons, including the fact that there's so much available land, you know, across.
Twice as much as Port of Miami.
Twice as much, at least to the Port of Miami, correct. And the growing population here.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Director. How are you this morning?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, sir. Real quick, when we talk about port growth, how, how's our port growing overall in comparison to other ports? We have a port right to the north of us that I, you know, would like to take all their business away from them and put it in our port. But, and we have ports throughout the state of Florida and as well as other places. So how is our port in comparison? So people understand what a great economic driver this is for our community.
Well, let me give you an example, Commissioner. Last year, you know, we just about matched the container through the Port of Tampa. We went from zero 10 years ago to matching the same amount of containers. So that's quite a feat, because we did it with a lot less equipment and very quickly. And so that in itself is a measure. Ports are measured in various forms, you know, the volume of, of fuel, the volume of aggregates. So we're more than holding our own. And in fact, on a per acre basis, we're one of the most profitable ports around, and on a And on a net revenue, net cash flow basis, I think we're the highest just about, if not maybe second highest in the state of Florida.
Um, when I'm out speaking to groups and stuff, I think one of the biggest things people don't know is we're like, how many bananas did you import last year? I mean, that's a, I mean, people always ask me what's, what's one of our biggest importing items, and I'm like, well, bananas. So you can tell us how many bananas you imported last year?
And, and we measured it twice. We counted it twice. It's over a billion bananas. I couldn't believe it. Over a billion, one point one billion. Imagine Manatee County, everybody's eating bananas like crazy here. Everybody's eating bananas, forty-eight million pineapples, forty-eight million avocados. I mean, you know, we're keeping this county fed. Um, so, and that's why we didn't close during COVID. You know, the supermarkets were open, and we needed to make sure that, and as a result of the port authority's support, we stayed at the port, delivering those, those precious commodities that people, you know, needed to go at least to the supermarket and buy.
I know you touched on it briefly, um, during the budget, but a lot of people don't, you know, for the public's information, a lot of people don't understand exactly what you bring into the port. Um, can you just go highlight some of the, uh, for the public, what the port does bring in as far as what they use every day?
Uh, for example, um, you know, uh, we bring in wood pulp that goes into toilet paper. That was a short demand, you know, or high demand back in the day, as we know. Everybody, you know, had an issue there. And, uh, also the fuel that you drive to the supermarket, the fruits and vegetables that you buy, the appliances that you're going and buying, uh, just about, you know, the, just about everything. Uh, the lumber that you buy, the roads that you drive on come from the aggregate at the port. So this port authority really, really has an important responsibility to maintain the efficiency, uh, of the port to make sure that those commodities are delivered to the residents of Manatee and surrounding counties. The port has a regional impact, not just Manatee County. So this port authority has a, really a much larger footprint than it would reflect just by the port. So whether, you know, we go all the way down to Lee County for fuel, obviously all the way up to Canada with bananas, you know, and all the East Coast, or pineapples and/or lumber, aluminum, um, all sorts of commodities that are used in every day and in the everyday development of communities and the everyday, uh, needs of the residents.
Thank you, sir. You guys do a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. Uh, I don't think we have any other questions. Before I get yelled at again, uh, I will open this up to public comment before we entertain motions. Anyone with a comment regarding the fiscal year budget, uh, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the port? What? We're in the middle of a motion. All right. All right. See, now we'll close public comment, and I will entertain motions for the adoption of budget resolution PA twenty-three dash twenty-one.
I am due to approve.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Ron. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved unanimously. Uh, with that, I will move on to, uh, your executive director comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, the port is doing well, as you know. Uh, we are hitting all cylinders. We're pursuing the business. We are essentially maintaining the facility. So all the things that are needed and expected of the port are being done, and we're growing the footprint, you know, with additional, uh, customers that have the ability to buy, buy even more land across the street. And so we're doing well, and we continue to essentially, uh, supply the needs of Manatee County in an efficient and timely manner. So.
Got it?
That's all I have.
All right. Are there any other commissioner comments?
I'd just like to say one thing. I mean, I, I'm a huge fan. So if you can leverage me for any business development, I'm, I'm very open to that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, and I will, uh, as Commissioner Ron reminded me, it was, it was on my list, cause we got an email like a week ago and it was on social. But I do wanna congratulate you on behalf of this Port Authority Board for being elected as the Chair of the Florida Ports Council. Uh, that's a, a great accomplishment. It's gonna help Seaport Manatee tremendously to have your insight and your leverage, uh, within that overall council. And I'm sure the, the ports as a whole in the state of Florida are gonna, uh, all prosper more because of you, especially when it comes to Tallahassee and DC and your advocacy for, for the ports in this state. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And, uh, I will remind everyone or tell everyone, uh, we discussed, September, we're going to be back here for our short, but October, we're planning on going back to the port, which we try to do once a quarter for bigger presentations. Uh, typically, the fourth quarter, we'll end up going back a second time because in December, there's always the Christmas party with the staff of the port. So we'll ultimately be there twice during the fourth quarter, October for the meeting, and then December for the Christmas party. If there's no other comments, then I will thank you, Carlos, for your, uh, for you and your staff, your presentation. Looks like a great budget for this year, and, uh, I will close the Port Authority meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome back. All right. So back in the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, we are going to start off with presentation of the August Employee of the Month Award to Paul Panic. I'm not sure what department Paul is with, but this is your moment to come down. I'm gonna guess Conservation Lands. Charlie's coming.
Charlie's coming. Yes, Natural Resources Department.
Natural Resources.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, County Administrator Charlie Bishop, acting, and county attorney. I'm here to introduce Paul Panic, Environmental Program Manager of the Department of Natural Resources. He was chosen by his peers, uh, as Employee of the Month for the month of August. This is a distinction, of course, among over two thousand county employees to be chosen by your peers and nominating committee for Employee of the Month. You know, you have thirty-three years, I think, with Manatee County. You know, Saturday Night Live gives those jackets for five hosts, right? Consecutive hosts? We should be giving jackets for people who take that thirty-year bin and go beyond and stay with Manatee County with the services you, you, you provide. I'd just like to make a few observations if I can with Paul. So Paul, and the board and members of the public, when our drinking water and irrigation water is free of hazardous materials, you can thank Paul Panic. When our landscapes and rights away are free from hazardous waste, you can thank Paul Panic. When our well drillers use the best practices for development of new wells or closure of old wells in Manatee County, you can thank Paul Panic. When our fertilizer ordinance works to reduce nitrogen releases to our surface waters to tap down red tide, you can thank Paul Panic and his enforcement team. When you drive by a line of light manufacturing and industrial warehousing, and you hope that behind those doors and you trust that the chemicals used there are being handled accordingly, manifest being recorded and accounted for, you can thank Paul Panic. And finally, when you count on an employee to be responsive, upbeat in attitude, with a desire to approach every customer with professionalism, understanding our mission, you can count on Paul Panic. Thank you, man. I have a few more remarks, of course, from Paul's supervisor, Alyssa Powers, who is manager of our Environmental Protection Division of the Natural Resources Department. Alyssa?
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, County Attorney, Mr. Bishop. For environmental protection, one of our greatest challenges is getting people to connect with how their actions affect the environment. Paul's solution to this challenge has always been an environmental education-first approach. Over thirty-three years, he's assisted numerous businesses and individuals with complying with estate and local environmental rules, which sometimes can be very confusing to people. And he does it in a very supportive and thoughtful manner, often walking people step by step through the process of attaining compliance. This is, this is the carrot, not the stick. This is not about the enforcement. It's about doing what is required in order to protect Manatee County to continue to be this beautiful place to live and work and play. After working alongside Paul for fourteen years, I'm so very pleased that his nomination for Employee of the Month has been accepted. I did wanna leave with one anecdote. For some of the commissioners who were up here, uh, about a year ago, um, we were getting into Labor Day weekend, and the Ford Hammer boat ramp was gonna need some overflow parking, um, over at Hidden Harbor. And, um, Charlie Bishop's team, property management, everybody was working really, really hard to make that happen. Nobody probably realizes that Paul was right there in the mix, too, because there was an old well that needed to be abandoned and properly abandoned. He got that call, and he made that happen in ten days. He got the consultants out there that needed to do the work. He did the paperwork, got everything to the state, safely, properly abandoned, beautiful Labor Day weekend where everybody could get out on the water through that boat ramp. And you know what? We were talking about it later. He didn't even realize that that was such an important deal. He just got the call, was asked to do it, and made it happen. And that's Paul. This job is not glamorous. Thank you so much for the work that you do every day.
Pleasure.
Thank you. Be ready.
Wow.
Tough act to follow, sir.
Were they exaggerating a little bit?
Can't announce your retirement now.
No. Yeah, I left the renamed Florida Department of Environmental Regulation in nineteen ninety to work for the county's Pollution Control Division, which was part of the Health Department. After a few years, we were moved into the county as the Environmental Management Department. We were then downsized and merged under Charlie in two thousand and seven, when the real estate market was suffering. At that time, my group, Groundwater Protection, went from six employees to two, but we maintained all the same duties and responsibilities. In two thousand and eleven, the county adopted the Landscape Fertilizer Ordinance, and I learned how to do code enforcement. Since then, the county has grown, and our Environmental Protection Division has taken on additional programs like overstate, oversight of Wingate East Phosphate Mine and Gopher Tortoises. We put more time in development reviews, property acquisitions, complaint investigations, and special projects like Piney Point and Talavast, just to name a few. All this would not be possible without dedicated staff. Our pollutant storage tank inspector, Mark Trathue, who has been with me for almost twenty years, has consistently handled our state contract obligations that entire time. Matt Turlikowski, he's our well inspector. He's been with the county a little over a year, a little over a year, and he's coming along quite nicely. Our division manager, Alyssa, has truly went the extra mile in the last year and a half to provide all of us with the tools and flexibility needed to do our jobs. She's always positive and brings out the best in staff. Last Friday, Alyssa and our awesome administrative person, Kelly Palansky, did she make it?
She did not.
She didn't make it. She got stuck in traffic. She put together a nice luncheon for me at the office, and guess who showed up? Guess who was there? Charlie Hunziker. I've known Charlie for over thirty years and can tell, can tell you he's always supportive of staff. His list of accomplishments could fill a tome. With that, I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to be here today, and I'd like to thank you, the commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, your family.
Oh.
Lovely family.
I thought you were gonna do that. This is my lovely wife, Kathy, my oldest daughter, Rose, and my youngest daughter, Abby.
This is your Employee of the Month plaque.
Don't forget, yeah, don't forget your plaque.
Thank you again.
All right.
For all your service.
Sir, thank you so much. Thirty years of service. I can't believe it, it took this long for him to, to discover you. You're probably out in the field working all the time. No one knew, uh, to, to recognize you as Employee of the Month out of two thousand people. Uh, but obviously very well earned. Thank you for, for all the literally decades of service to Manatee County and to our environment. Thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're gonna move into proclamations, and so we'll entertain motions on adopting proclamations. We can do this verbally.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ron, second by Commissioner Ballard to adopt proclamations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, proclamations are adopted unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. So then we'll start with item number two on today's agenda, which is adoption and presentation through by Commissioner Bearden, adoption and presentation of proclamation designating September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three as tribute to Heroes' Day in Manatee County. So those of you that are here to accept to be part of this proclamation, please come down to the, stand behind the podium as Commissioner Bearden reads the proclamation into the record.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for your service, all y'all.
Come on up. Come on up here. I have the honor today to give the proclamation on tribute to Heroes' Day. And, uh, I have several heroes sitting behind me today. So proclamation, whereas on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the United States suffered and endured one of the most horrific acts in its history. The attack upon our homeland by terrorists who hijacked four jetliners to execute multiple homicide bombing attacks of great evil. And whereas the American people wish to remember and honor the victims lost in this tragedy with courage, strength, and dignity. And whereas September eleventh, two thousand and one, proved to the world that heroes come in all shapes and sizes. Heroes are the people sitting by you today, those who gave selflessly and contributed to the strength of our country, and those who responded without hesitation and are ready to respond again. And whereas firefighters, law enforcement, and emergency medical services personnel are highly trained public servants who work under demanding and dangerous conditions. And the courageous and unselfish acts of these public servants proved again that day that our country is truly the land of the free and the home of the brave. And whereas for many years to come, when our children stand with their hands over their hearts and pledge allegiance to the United States of America, they will more clearly understand that as one nation, under God, the United States is indivisible, a country unable to be divided by tragedy. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three shall be known, designated, and set aside as tribute to Heroes' Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present on voting this twenty-second day of August, two thousand and twenty-three, signed by our Chairman, Kevin Van Ostenbridge, and our Clerk of the Court, Angelina Colaniso. Who would like to accept this proclamation today?
Good morning. My name is Stacy Bailey. I represent the Manatee County Fire Chiefs Association, serving as President. And as I look back on, uh, September eleventh, one of the key things that, um, focused, and has been our theme for the past couple of years, is remembering those who died, those who served, and those who carry on. And I started reflecting on this, um, last night, and I, I did some research. In the first proclamation, on September thirteenth, two thousand and one, by our President of the United States, George W. Bush, wrote, "We mourn with those who have suffered great and disastrous loss. All our hearts have been seared by the sudden and senseless taking of innocent..." All our hearts have been seared by the sudden and senseless taking of innocent lives. We pray for healing and for strength to serve and encourage one another in hope and faith." Scripture says, "Blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted." I call on every American family and the family of America to observe a national day of prayer and remembrance." Because that's what it was. September 11th, the events coming after was a prayer and remembrance. And we carry that on. So your proclamation today is a continuance of that. And I'm honored to accept it on behalf of all the men and women who serve, the police, the fire, the EMS, the military and all the lives that were lost throughout. And thank you. One other thing, every year we have our 9/11 event. And this year, we have a new chairman of that committee. So I'd like to introduce that chairman to you and to give you the details of this year's event. Billy?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Billy Smith. I represent the committee that's putting the memorial service together. I want to invite everybody to Rossi Park in downtown Bradenton. It will be the morning of September 11th, 9:00 a.m., approximately one hour. Everybody's invited. Second note, I'd like to thank the fire chiefs, the city of Bradenton and the county for their continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all we have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have that information to put on our website to advertise the event, sir? Okay, let's make sure we do that so that, you know, anyone who wants to go, everybody knows about it at least and has the opportunity to go. And gentlemen, thank you for everything you do every single day, serving our community here in town. We know that every day when firefighters go to work that there's a likelihood, a significant likelihood, that they're going to, you know, face death at some point during the course of their day and that they're going to see, encounter county residents probably at their worst moment during the course of their day. And we know it happens multiple times every single day and it's not something that can be just left at work. We know it goes home with you. We know it affects your family and your life beyond the call. And we thank you. You know, words can't express the gratitude that this board has for what you all do every single day and what all the people in your organizations do for us every day. Thank you.
Well, continuing of the proclamation is the key thing. So thank you so much for that. Thank you so much.
All right, our next proclamation is the adoption and presentation of proclamation designating September 2023 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Manatee County. And Commissioner Turner will be presenting the proclamation. Whoever is here to accept the proclamation, oh, we all wear yellow. That makes it easy. Yes. If you would come up and stand behind Commissioner Turner.
I didn't wear my gold.
You didn't get the memo, I guess.
Be bold, wear gold. Love it. Oh, thank you. This proclamation is, you know, tugs at my heartstrings. Most of us have been touched by cancer in one form or another, but when it hits our children, it's heartbreaking and tragic. You know, they haven't had a chance to live life and they're suffering like that. So here's the proclamation. Whereas the National, the stats in here are pretty staggering, too, by the way. Whereas the National Cancer Institute and the American Cancer Society report cancer as the leading cause of death by disease amongst U.S. children between their birth and 18. This tragic disease is newly diagnosed in over 9,910 of our country's young people. And whereas, over 40,000 children undergo treatment each year and one in five of our nation's children loses their battle with cancer. This year alone, an estimated 1,590 cancer deaths will occur in children. Cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children between 1 and 14 years old. And whereas, 60% of infants, children and teens, through teens, will survive, will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive medical treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas, Blaze of Hope was established to spread the message of hope to families and children battling life-threatening illnesses by providing financial assistance, raising awareness and building community. And whereas, the mayor in Manatee County, Florida, take pride and recognize the month of September, 2023, as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join in reaffirming the commitment to fighting childhood cancer. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September, 2023 shall be known, designated and set aside as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with quorum present and voting this 22nd day of August, 2023. Board of Commissioners, Kevin, the chairperson, signed, and so did Angela Colaniso, attested. Who's accepting? Oh, shoot.
We're glad you're better than none of us.
Yeah, I was looking that way. This is wrong. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, Commissioner Turner, you have them crying and laughing all at the same time.
They're tears of joy.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you very much for giving us this recognition.
Sir, give us your name for the recognition.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ben La Land. I'm the director of Blaze of Hope. I'm joined here with our vice president, our secretary and founder, Lisa Moore, my cousin, Blaze's mom. Blaze of Hope provides financial assistance to families with children in the hospital with life-threatening illnesses. And we help them with a $500 gift to pay their bill of choice. We've paid electric bills, car bills, phone bills, water bills, rent, you name it. Pretty much anything except medical because we believe there's a lot of help out there for the medical side of things. This has been a long time. We're in our ninth year as a 501(c)(3). I'm a Sarasota native. I was born in Sarasota Memorial. I think just about everybody up here was also. So this is a, our goal is to make no parent ever have to choose between going to work and being with their sick child. That's why we do what we do. Last year, we helped 52 families. And this year, we intend to double that. And so far, we're on a pretty good pace. September 9th, we have a bridge walk at the John Ringling Causeway. They're going to light the bridge gold in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So it'll be our second annual walk. I encourage everybody, go to blazeofhope.org, check out our website. All the information's on there. And also, excitingly, we have a little over 50, 71 providences, courthouses, bridges, Ferris wheels, walks. And we have them in Australia, Canada, several in Florida. The Sunshine Skyway Bridge is going to be lit gold. So we're just really thankful that this community has come around us so that we can continue to spread hope like fire. So again, please check out blazeofhope.org. If you know anybody that needs our help, send them our way. We have actually helped a few people out of the state of Florida. We are not Florida-specific. So that helps us spread our wings even further. And I'd like to turn it over to my cousin Lisa if she would like to say something. She's the founder, Blaze's mom.
All right, Cousin Lisa.
Hi, I can't thank you guys enough. This is incredible. It's an honor and thank you for helping us keep families and kids together. I personally was affected by it and I lost my son to cancer. And the community took care of me so that I could be with my son 24 hours a day. I didn't have to leave his side. So thank you for letting us continue awareness and support. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And it's our honor that you came here today. You know, what makes the biggest impact in our community, Manatee or Sarasota, right? What makes the biggest impact in our community is when residents like yourselves experience something, realize that there's a need that's not being met and then take it upon yourself to step up and dedicate your time and your resources to bring awareness to it, yes, but also to meet the need. So it was like the very least that we could do to bring you here today and help you, you know, thank you, number one, but also help you get additional exposure for your organization so that hopefully more people will reach out to you via your website. And, you know, we'd love their money, of course, but, you know, if they want to contribute time as well and help you go out and obtain more resources and help you go out and raise even more money, I think that's really what you're after is you're looking for more community involvement and more people to reach out. So any way that we can help, we're happy, of course, happy to do that. And thank you again for everything that you do for our community.
Well, wear gold in September.
Wear gold in September.
Sir, with respect, could I have one more request? Perhaps we could get blazeofhope.org on your website?
We'll do what we can, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Ron. Tough act to follow there, sir.
I know.
Commissioner Ron is here with adoption and presentation of proclamation designating September 20, September 2023 as National Preparedness Month in Manatee County. And I believe we have members of our Public Safety Department that are here who will be accepting this. So if they would come down and stand behind Commissioner Ron as he reads the proclamation into the record.
First, I want to recognize Steve Lichauer in his outstanding uniform today. Looks good in it.
He cleans up nicely.
I know. Looks great, doesn't he? Well, like the Boy Scouts say, always be prepared. With that, whereas each year, Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, promotes National Preparedness Month as an effort to strengthen the country's preparedness capabilities for natural disasters or hazards or terrorist attacks. And whereas, September 11th, 2001, the U.S. government has taken steps to encourage all citizens to make their own survival preparations. And whereas, Manatee County residents can take actions to become prepared to respond and recover from natural or man-made hazards, no matter how big or small. The more people who are prepared, the quicker our community will recover. And whereas, first responders may not always be available to reach residents quickly after an event. And the most important step to take is to be self-sufficient for a minimum of seven days. And whereas, Manatee County encourages all residents, visitors, business owners to understand the threat of a natural or man-made hazard and to undertake preparedness, measures to protect life, welfare and property. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 20, that September 2023 shall be known, designated and set aside as National Preparedness Month in Manatee County, Florida. And the community is encouraged to observe this month with preparing their homes, families and workplace through training and civic activities. Adopted with a quorum present, voting 22nd of August, 2023, attested by our chair, Kevin Van Austinbridge, and the clerk of court, Angelina Colaniso. Thank you very much. Our public service guys are here to accept this. An emergency management.
Thank you, Commissioner. Steve Lichauer, Deputy Director of Public Safety and Chief Emergency Management, Chairman, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney. First, I'd like to thank our director, Jody Fisk. And I believe back in the back is our Assistant County Administrator, Courtney DePaul. And behind me, I have a variety of emergency management staff, public safety individuals. And when we talk about preparedness, it's just not emergency management or public safety. It's every employee of Manatee County and not just Manatee County governments. It's the fire districts, it's the law enforcement. As most of you know, during an activation, they all come together to make the county safer. And in preparation, too, we want citizens to know it's just not about hurricanes. Although, right now, I hate to look at the weather map with five or six storms out in the Gulf and Atlantic at this moment in time. I'll look at the clock at 9:57 this morning. None are a threat at this moment in time, but this is the busy time of the season. What I also want to remind everybody, it's just not about hurricanes. If we look what happened to Maui just last week or Los Angeles with the earthquake, if we look here locally, Piney Point, the train derailment just a few months ago, gas leaks and so forth. So it's overall hazards that we have to worry about. So we'd like to thank our director, our administration and of you for this proclamation and the support you give us throughout the year. Thank you, Director.
Just to echo what Steve said, I went to sleep on Sunday and there were four Xs on the map. And I woke up on Monday and they were all named. So we never know how fast these things will change. We can watch a track and think it's going one way and it will turn and smack us in the face the next. So our teams, I'm very proud of them. They work very hard year-round. I'm especially proud of the fact that they put such a focus on preparedness and trying to get our communities to be self-sufficient. We will get resources as soon as we can. But those no-notice events as well are the events that take us by surprise. And because our teams do work so hard, our community is better prepared for it. So thank you to everyone behind me. And thank you for all the support that we receive from all of you. Thank you.
Well, everyone ran for the door, but I'll just say thank you all for everything that you do every day. Obviously, you're eager to get back to work. I guess five storms in the Atlantic and the Gulf means you don't want to spend much time hanging out with us. Which we're, which we're fine with. All right, moving on to item number five. Adoption and presentation of proclamation designating August 31st, 2023 as Overdose Awareness Day in Manatee County. We have Commissioner Ballard here to read the proclamation into the record. Who is here to accept the proclamation? If you would please come down and stand with Commissioner Ballard. Ma'am?
So overdose is absolutely devastating to families and children in our community. As a child welfare attorney, I had several cases of parents who ended up passing away due to overdose. And the devastation and the hole that that leaves for children is absolutely huge. We have really dedicated staff at EMS who are working day in and day out, responding to those overdoses. We get an average of over six a day in Manatee County. And as hard as they work and as hard as our sheriffs and police work, we have more and more dangerous drugs like fentanyl and carfentanil coming over the border. And, you know, people using those drugs who don't necessarily know what they're getting into. So this is absolutely a very necessary proclamation and something worth highlighting in our community particularly. So with that, I will go ahead with the proclamation. Whereas, August 31st, International Overdose Awareness Day is the world's most extensive annual campaign to end overdoses, remember without stigma those who have died and acknowledge the loss of family and friends left behind. And whereas, the theme of International Overdose Awareness Day 2023 is to raise awareness of the tragedy of overdose and to increase knowledge and understanding about overdose prevention and addiction care for individuals suffering from substance use disorder. Whereas, Florida experienced over 4,000 reported fatal overdoses in 2022 and Manatee County Emergency Medical Services responded to over 2,300 overdose calls. And whereas, Manatee County and community partners have initiated a collaborative approach to overdose prevention, emergency response, direct access to health and behavioral health care and social supports for long-term recovery from addiction for individuals and families. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that August 31st, 2023 shall be known, designated and set aside as Overdose Awareness Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 22nd day of August, 2023. Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, signed by our chairman, Kevin Van Austinbridge, and attested to by Angelina Colaniso, clerk of the Circuit Court.
Who is here to accept the proclamation?
Thank you, Commissioner Ballard, and thank you to all of Manatee County's commissioners for issuing this important proclamation declaring August 31st Overdose Awareness Day in Manatee County. I'm Sarah Holloway, a certified recovery peer specialist and supervisor of the Manatee County CORE Peer Program. CORE, which stands for Coordinated Opioid Recovery, is a collaborative approach to overdose prevention, emergency response, access to health and behavioral health care and social supports for long-term recovery from addiction. Today, I speak on behalf of the community partners standing with me and for the first responders, frontline health, mental health, social service workers and faith-based organizations who partner in programs like ours to end the opioid epidemic. I'm honored to accept this proclamation and to express our deep gratitude to our Manatee County Commissioners, staff and members of the public for your caring encouragement and support. We thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we thank you. All right, items number six and seven. Mr. Bishop, you wanted to make an announcement regarding those two items. Yes, sir. With permission, sir, we'd like to defer items six and seven to next Thursday's land use meeting. Apologize for any inconvenience. That's right. I believe six and seven are non-voting items, so they can easily be deferred. All right, then that brings us to item number eight, which is Manatee County Wetland Mitigation Program Feasibility Study and Recommendations. I believe Mr. Hunziker is here. And Mr. Hunziker, while we have you, we're going to take item number 54 out of order and have both of those items. and have both of those items, we'll hold both of those items, you know, consecutively so that your staff can get back to work. Sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Interim Administrator Charlie Bishop, County Attorney Bill Clegg, thank you for the opportunity to present. It's another great day for our department, and it is my honor to introduce this presentation and the one following for your meeting today, which will be led by two expert environmental scientists on your staff who head up working divisions of their own for environmental protection, environmental awareness, and environmental repair. At the direction of the Board, your staff has researched and prepared a environmental mitigation bank program, which meets the construction needs of our county's transportation, utility, and building departments. And today, we seek your direction to the interim County Administrator to implement this program immediately so that we may begin the process of doing cost-effective and responsive mitigation for the transportation projects and so many other things facing our upcoming capital improvement program. I'd like to introduce Sherri Swanson, who is the Ecological and Marine Resources Division Manager of our department, for a short presentation about the program and its benefits. We can... Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, everyone. We are here today to discuss the feasibility of establishing a Manatee County Wetland Why is mitigation needed? In simple terms, when development such as a road impacts wetlands, the developer, in this case, Public Works, is required to provide wetland mitigation. The amount of mitigation is determined through state and federal permitting. Mitigation is either provided through the creation of wetlands or through purchase of wetland mitigation credits. A Manatee County mitigation program would enable the county to create our own wetland mitigation areas and provide an opportunity to transform landscapes for the public benefit. Precup Reserve is an example of how a mitigation site transformed public lands. Precup Reserve was once fallow agricultural fields. This landscape was transformed to create coastal, uplands, and a tidal seagrass basin. Today, the site includes native vegetation, recreation trails, and boardwalks. The Curry Creek Site is one of Sarasota County's regional off-site mitigation areas, referred to as a ROMA. It was constructed to provide wetland mitigation credits for infrastructure projects. The site began as disturbed uplands dominated by Australian pines with deeply encased canals, but was transformed into meandering tidal creeks that now provide recreational value. Wetland impacts require mitigation. Both state and federal agencies adhere to the mitigation hierarchy for mitigating wetland impacts. This means that the preferred option by agencies is to purchase mitigation credits from a mitigation bank, followed by in-luck fee programs, and lastly, permittee responsible mitigation, only if mitigation bank credits are unavailable. This latter situation is what Public Works recently faced with Moccasins Wallow since mitigation credits sold out and Public Works was required to provide permittee responsible mitigation sites to advance the projects. Mitigation banks are often privately owned. However, both government and nonprofit organizations also own and operate mitigation banks. If Manatee County were to establish a mitigation bank, we could set credit pricing and better manage and control costs and schedules for county infrastructure development. Manatee County is unique in that it contains six regulatory watersheds delineated by the colors on this map. Typically, mitigation is required within the watershed where the project impact occurs, although there are exceptions. As you can see by the slide, many current and near-term transportation CIP projects, shown now in yellow, fall within the Manatee River watershed, shown in blue. While this watershed does have a private mitigation bank with credits, those credits are finite and are sold also to the private sector. Establishing county mitigation banks within that watershed, as well as the Little Manatee River watershed, shown in red, and the Tampa Bay watershed, shown in gray, would specifically support Manatee County's CIP project needs. Since presenting here in April, the Natural Resources Department prepared a mitigation feasibility study. As part of that study, we met with agencies, reviewed evolving state and federal regulations, and evaluated county-owned lands with mitigation potential. In order to rank site suitability, we considered site encumbrances that could prevent using a site for mitigation, and evaluated land characteristics that would support wetland mitigation. We also looked at mitigation needs by watershed, which was guided by the current and future CIP projections depicted on the previous map and shown here again in this table. Based on the study, we believe the best path forward for the wetland mitigation program will be to permit mitigation sites through both federal and state regulatory agencies. For federal permitting, we suggest an umbrella mitigation bank, which will allow us to set up multiple mitigation sites under one permit instrument per watershed and will allow us to control our credit prices. For the state, we believe regional off-site mitigation areas offer the best option to expedite permits, but we could also decide to permit single-site state mitigation banks. The permittee mitigation option will remain the default option until a mitigation program is up and running, unless private mitigation bank credits are available. The table on the right lists the candidate parcels reviewed by the feasibility study. You can see that considerable county land, county-owned land could be available for mitigation sites in the various watersheds of need. This slide lists the mitigation sites by watersheds that we believe would be the best sites to move forward immediately. We can see there are potential opportunities to generate mitigation credits within all watersheds, except the Peace River watershed, which currently neither has CIP projects nor county-owned lands. Revisiting the watershed map with the CIP road projects, we now add in the candidate parcels with mitigation potential that were identified by the feasibility study. You can see the sites in green are found within five of the six regulatory watersheds. Based on the site suitability ranking, we then reduce these sites to include the most viable sites to move forward with the mitigation program. These are shown in green, which are county-owned sites, and pink, which are possible future acquisition sites. As with anything, there will be challenges, but we believe there are viable solutions. As discussed, we have six regulatory watersheds, and we will need to carefully manage credit needs within each of these watersheds into the foreseeable future. The timeline to get a mitigation, federal mitigation bank online could take over four years, whereas a state ROMA, whereas a state ROMA or a state mitigation bank could likely be permitted more quickly. However, during the time it takes to get the mitigation program up and running, staff would be available to prioritize wetland mitigation on dedicated permittee responsible mitigation sites when wetland mitigation credits are unavailable from an existing mitigation bank. There are also upfront costs that will be necessary prior to the release and sale of wetland credits. For county-owned lands, we will not have land acquisition costs, but we will need to fund engineering designs, geotechnical studies, and hydrologic modeling. There will also be costs to prepare easements and financial documents. However, once designs are permitted and the documents are final, we will get our first credit release. The sale of those credits can be used to fund construction, which will result in the release of more credits, and so on. The goal is for the credit sales to fund long-term management of the mitigation bank and the upfront costs for the next mitigation site. There are notable benefits associated with a county mitigation program. First, the county buys credits derived from wetland restoration on county lands versus buying credits from sites out of the county, such as Hillsborough or Sarasota, or from banks on privately managed lands. Mitigation credits will be available for transportation projects, utility projects, affordable housing, libraries, and parks. Out of the gate, we believe the best, it is best to focus on providing mitigation for county infrastructure projects while we get the program off the ground. Although, once the program is established, we could look to expanding credit sales to municipalities, DOT partners, and other development interests. A mitigation program will give us better flexibility and certainty, since we won't be dependent on private credit availability. And once our first projects are up and running, the program will better control costs and schedules for county infrastructure development. We will have a dedicated funding source for managing county mitigation lands, and will be able to transform landscapes for the benefit of the public. Lastly, there may be opportunities for added benefits for things like coaster resiliency, clean fill for construction, and floodplain mitigation. For the final slide, we believe the best path forward is to fund the mitigation program. This will include four additional full-time staff, including two senior scientists, one field technician, and a financial, a fiscal analyst. The next step is to expedite formal due diligence and a pro forma financial analysis for the recommended county sites, including at a minimum Hidden Harbor Park, which you're all familiar with, Duette South and Duette North, and Flamingo Cay. For watersheds with fewer mitigation opportunities or higher project mitigation needs, it will be important to also consider acquiring additional mitigation lands. Finally, we move to hire an engineering consultant to support staff in the design of the mitigation sites. Thank you all. Accept any questions now.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Commissioner Turner, you're on the board first, sir.
Yeah, I just don't see any downside to, to this. You know, obviously, Al County is, is very environmentally friendly. What I, why, so the, the way the mitigation banks work right now, just for clarity, is we go outside, and then the land could end up being outside Al County, like Hillsborough, like you said. So this would give us the opportunity to create more preserved land within Al County, correct?
Yes, manage and preserve. Yes, we do have one mitigation bank in the county on private lands, and that's on private lands, but we also do go out to Hillsborough or Sarasota County for mitigation bank credits. If we get, if we manage county lands or acquire additional county lands for mitigation within the watersheds that were shown on the map, then yes, we can use those opportunities to work for the benefit of public lands.
Right, so then those public lands would be basically refurbished, turned into preserve.
Correct.
Right. So, huge benefit. We bring that back. So we've got costs, scheduling for our, for our own projects within the county, we've got more control over that, and then we bring more, we're going to have the opportunity to bring more land into preserve within Al County. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard, you're next.
So I think, I think that Commissioner Turner said it really well. He said a lot of things that, that I would have said myself. I, I think that there's really no, no downside to this project. You know, making sure that, that the mitigation land that, that we're required to have is in our county and has a public benefit, and that people are able to utilize that as, as preserved land, it, it just makes complete sense. So I'm, I'm strongly in favor of, of getting this started.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ron and then Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I'd like to thank Sherri and Charlie for all the hard work they've done on putting this whole presentation together. It's been months that we've been speaking about having a mitigation bank, you know, since I got here seven, eight months ago. Again, to Commissioner Turner's and Commissioner Ballard's comment, this is so important for our county right now, to control our destiny on our mitigation credits. And to the point is, is that, basically Sherri hit on it, if we go outside to Hillsborough County and buy credits in Hillsborough County, the money stays. It's Manatee County taxpayer money staying in Hillsborough County, not coming back here and doing the things we need to do with it and refurbishing these, these wetland mitigation areas. So I highly support this program. I hope the rest of the Board does. And again, thank you guys for your, your hard work and the great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, to just to echo the Board, excited about this. This will be great moving forward for us to be able to be more nimble and efficient and, and have a great effect on the, on the environment overall. On your slide on, I think it says Path Forward, you mentioned an Erie Road site. I was just curious about that.
Yeah, so that is a site that currently Public Works is looking at for a pond site. There's a willing seller, and there's a lot of additional land available on that site. We visited it last week, and there's definitely opportunities for wetland mitigation. So we would work closely with Chad and his engineers to make sure they first prioritize the placement of their ponds and then look to utilize perhaps the rest of the area for mitigation.
Okay, so that's relatively early on. I mean, we've, we've talked to the landowner.
Yes, yes, we have.
All right.
We were with them last week.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for a great presentation here. I mean, I'm just going to echo the Board, and this is just a no-brainer, so I'm fully supportive of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I agree, no downside. Mr. Hunsicker, are you looking for action on this item today, listed as just a presentation?
We're looking for action to direct the County Administrator to implement the program, line up and give authority to hire the necessary staff, and give us direction to move forward. We are ready to take off.
Okay, so hold on a second, because on the, on the screen here, David, we're holding item number eight.
Yeah.
We're holding, item 54 will be next. We weren't opening them together. I haven't read 54 into the record yet, so it's only item number eight. There we go. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Ron...
I stole my second.
...to approve the motion that was read by Mr., yeah, read into the record by Mr. Hunsicker, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Thatcher. Madam Clerk, do you have the, the motion, or do you need it repeated?
I think we can repeat it.
Oh, well, dispute over there. Could you read me what you have then, please? Denise?
Authorization for the County Administrator to establish a Manatee County mitigation program and increase natural resources staffing by four FTE positions comprised of one environmental program manager, one ecological resources coordinator, and one environmental specialist, and one fiscal analyst.
Is that right, Mr. Hunsicker?
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ron, it was your motion.
I'm good with it.
Okay, Commissioner Thatcher, you seconded. Okay, then we're going to open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to come forward to address the Board on item number eight on today's agenda, which is Wetland Mitigation Program? All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment at this time, and we can move forward with the vote.
No public comment.
Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. It's 10:22, but we're going to go ahead and open up item number 54 at this time, jumping ahead in your agenda while we have natural resources staff here. And I'll read that item into the record. Item number 54 under Natural Resources on the regular agenda is Adoption of Resolution R-23-0664, authorizing execution of agreement between the Florida Wildlife Commission, FWC, and Manatee County, establishing a gopher tortoise long-term recipient site within Duette Preserve. Mr. Hunsicker.
Mr. Chairman, again, members of the Board, interim County Administrator Charlie Bishop, County Attorney Bill Clegg. Again, my pleasure to introduce this program, which has been led by Alyssa Powers and Kathleen Barrett of the Environmental Management Department Division. Is, we're moving now to what we must do to what we can do over the environmental lands this Board and your predecessors have, have done, to create lands of preserves that can be used to protect and provide protection to our low-leak gopher tortoise, who literally lives among us. From time to time, though, they must be removed from construction sites carefully, safely, and there is ample room at, at our preserves, in particular Duette Preserve, to rehome these animals for, and under careful, controlled conditions, under the authority and watchful eye of the Florida Wildlife Conservation Commission. So I'd like to introduce Alyssa Powers and her team to present this program and seek your counsel and direction to approve the resolution with the State of Florida to implement it.
Good morning again, Commissioners Chair, Mr. Bishop, and County Attorney Clegg. So this has been a long time coming, too, and moving from wetlands... So this has been a long time coming, too, and moving from wetlands to the high and dry lands here, and this was not our intent. Sheri and I were working separately, very diligently, to get both of these programs going, and it just so happened that we're here at the same time. So thank you for hearing from both of us. So, the gopher tortoise program, if we can go to the first slide, I'm glad that the chair was able to say FWC, so hopefully I can say that the whole rest of the time, because saying Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission is a mouthful, and I will definitely get tongue-tied on one point in this presentation. So the gopher tortoise is regulated under the Florida Endangered and Threatened Species section of the Florida Administrative Code. It is a long-lived reptile, it is not a turtle, lives in the upland habitats throughout Florida. They dig very deep burrows, as you can see in this diagram here, and it's been documented that the burrows can support of over 360 species of other wildlife. So in protecting the gopher tortoise, we protect basically a whole microcosm of wildlife happening there. So
We're gonna have a competition amongst the commissioners, who's willing to stick their hand down a gopher tortoise's burrow.
So
The winner gets to be chair.
I am not. I am, I'm not gonna, don't, don't take that bet. No, you, no. I don't have a fear of snakes, but I appreciate them. And they also do reside in these burrows. Actually, on the top of the picture there is the eastern indigo snake, just gonna put a plug for that really quickly, since you mentioned it, they are a threatened species federally, and they actually will eat rattlesnakes. So they are a snake that we want in the burrows, and we also do have at Duette Preserve, so they go hand in hand. So where was I? Okay, so, as we know, they are in uplands, and therefore, they get in the way when legal permitted development activities want, or need to take place. So the FWC has a gopher tortoise program in which they permit recipient sites, so somebody gets their construction permit, and then they get a relocation permit, and they're allowed to relocate them to permitted recipient sites. Duette Preserve has suitable habitat of up to 4,500 acres. And we also experience similar, Manatee County is experiencing similar situations with the wetlands, where gopher tortoise banks, there are privately permitted gopher tortoise banks, and they also reach capacity. And then there's no place to take tortoises that we encounter on infrastructure projects, CIP projects, building projects, all of them themselves. So we've also hit those situations in Manatee County where the capacity at these gopher tortoise recipient sites have been full up. So, we got to thinking, and Kathleen Barrett here is an authorized gopher tortoise agent and a wildlife ecologist, and so we asked the commission if we could proceed with research on this, this project. And in doing that, we, if we can go to the next slide, sorry. We, oh, hey, there's a clicker. We started with 450 acres, that's 10%, I just wanna point that out now, because I'll come back to it later. So, in the long-term protection of this, we looked at 450 acres at Duette Preserve. And then, in doing this, we also looked at the reserve capacity for infrastructure projects, so that we don't end up with delays on those projects, but then also whether to open it up for development and other individuals as well. And we believe that we have enough habitat to support doing that. So, this is a fee-based program, and the fees will, will support the long-term compliance monitoring and reporting that's required for the recipient site permit. It will cover receiving and tagging that Kathleen will perform, and all the preparation materials. It will cover administrative costs, which is important, and I'll touch on that on the next slide a little bit, training personnel, and habitat management requirements. Now, Duette Preserve is, is very successfully managed right now, under resource management. We have a great fire, prescribed fire program. This actually, these fees will supplement those costs, so we'll still continue to manage these acres under that program, and now it, the fees will support that activity. So, not to get down into the weeds on this one, but the 450 acres is separated into three recipient site units, which are just highlighted there, and our staff under Kathleen's supervision has extensively surveyed the vegetation, the habitat, and the number of tortoises out there. And in doing that, Fish and Wildlife, FWC, has agreed that we can start with taking 826 tortoises. That will be our capacity, overall capacity for the site. So, the benefits of the recipient site to cover some of this that I mentioned previously, the capacity will be reserved, there'll be reserved capacity for our private infrastructure projects, and then there will be an open percentage also for development within Manatee County. Fifty miles either side of the recipient site is, am I saying that right, is the, is the requirement by FWC. It will be restocking tortoises on managed lands where historically we have depleted populations. Again, this in no way is an overstocking of the habitat. We have surveyed extensively, and our habitat will be able to support this population, and it's not there now because of the pet trade and previous impacts that occurred on the landscape, and so we have a lower population than, than we should for the habitat that we have. We're able to establish our own recipient site pricing, we will be looking at market rate, though, we're not out to out-compete anybody if there is capacity in another, in another recipient site. The FWC actually tells the, the permittee when they get their relocation permit, which recipient site is available to relocate to. So there's not a competitive, overly competitive between the two. And then, again, the recipient fees can be used to reinvest into the lands that's already being managed by natural resources, and invest into other lands if we decide to expand this into other locations, or the other 3,000 and whatever acres are left on Duette that are acceptable, suitable for gopher tortoises. By the numbers, the current market rate is 6,000 a tortoise, and I know Commissioner Cruz has probably already calculated it out in his head, because he does math faster than I do, that's $4.4 million in revenue, and we're expecting a revenue, a net revenue of $1.1 million from just the first 450 acres. Market rate is variable, it has stayed at the 6,000 a tortoise recently, but we will check on that quarterly, and we'll just evaluate it against the other recipient sites. Again, not overpricing, not underpricing, undercutting anything, just fair market value. There will be a non-refundable administrative fee, and that covers all of the logistics involved with just moving the tortoises, tracking the tortoises, the compliance reporting, getting, getting all of that out and done, so. Almost done, okay. Activities to date, so, we have our authorized gopher tortoise agent accepted at the FWC, and she is the permitted agent. The application is routing through FWC, and the conservation easement sketch and description at Duette Preserve for the history of phosphate out there, and the potential for mineral rights, little bit extra time spent on conservation easement documents, and then, of course, our initial account key was created as the board approved that earlier. So as of today, the next steps are the adoption of the Resolution R-23064, and that covers another item in the permit, which requires that the board recognize the funding of the program. It is a 50-year permit, so that covers all of that. Then the memorandum of agreement between FWC and Manatee County for the establishment of this, with the conservation easement, all of those get executed and sent to Tallahassee, where they will issue the permit. With our scheduling then, we're anticipating implementation of this project to occur first quarter of 2024, and that's just leaving it to FWC's process, once we get them all the executed documents, to, to move forward with this. The, sorry, the Duette Preserve Habitat Management Plan will have to be modified, which is a consent agenda item to include the gopher tortoise habitat management plan, that's a requirement, and then the, the fee policies, our fees already include the gopher tortoise fee, but we wanted to add the fee policy so that it was clear to everybody that we will evaluate market rate quarterly. And with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions for natural resources, and we do have a gopher tortoise agent on hand to answer questions. Commissioner Satcher, Ballard, Ron, and Turner. All right, this is a popular subject. Commissioner Satcher.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions. First of all, it was 800, how many tortoises do we have?
Eight hundred and twenty-six.
Eight hundred and twenty-six, so for me, that sounds like a lot. Is that gonna be the, one of the largest, the biggest in the county, the biggest in the area, or, or no?
Um, no, actually, no. Our stocking rates are under two tortoises per acre.
Okay.
So that is slightly below. So, again, we're not about overstocking, we don't want to stress the tortoises or impact the environment negatively, so we're, we're erring on the side of caution and going with the 1.9 tortoises per acre, and two tortoises per acre gets us, you know, a couple more. But it's all based on that habitat and the vegetation, because that is their food and their water source, so we, we wanna make sure that, you know, they're, they're not stressed when they, they move out there.
Right.
Ms. Chairman, I also want to add, don't wanna reach beyond the current, but we're looking at 4,500 acres approximately at Duette that will receive gopher tortoises in this nature. So this, this number is for the first of four units coming forward over the future. We're not going to open up all the rest of the territory until, you know, segment one is filled, and then we move to segment two, and then we move to segment three, and we move to segment four. But there is a long-term, bright future, both profitably for, for this department, I hate to use that word, because it's revenue that's reinvested right back into the property. But it is obviously a very encouraging program to move forward with, because it has a great future of sustainable revenue. Thank you.
And Charlie, I had another question for you. We've spoken a little bit in the past, when we were, I believe we were out at Robinson together, in, in looking there, and you talked about kind of when you have ag land versus when land goes into development, and you mentioned the cost of tortoises, how much it costs to relocate them, et cetera. Is there a chance of us maybe in the future having a program to where, let's say you have a 100-acre farm, and here's a gopher tortoise, and you've got, you know, cattle or whatever you have there, to where we could maybe provide a discounted rate for land that's zoned ag, with the intent being that we end up with more total, you know, gopher tortoises that are saved or preserved?
Nothing, nothing, nothing preventing us from going in that direction. Yeah, nothing prevents us from going in that direction. Again, we're allowed to set our recipient fees, so as such, we can, we can set them based on, on land type, if the board would so choose. So currently, we're just looking at a discounted rate for our CIP projects, because we're, we need to be able to, to pay for the program, but, you know, for, for our, our infrastructure projects, there's, there's that discounted fee in order to keep our tortoises in the county, which, again, right now, the tortoise, the tortoise banks, I keep saying banks, recipient sites, are out of county, so we are also moving our, this resource out of county, so this will keep them in the county, and, you know, and then build back up a healthy population on county-managed lands. So, yeah, I, I think that that's definitely a possibility.
Okay, yeah, I'd like for us to look into that in the future, just because if we could create a situation that is a win all the way around, a win for the environment and for the species, and also for the farmers, someone that has land sitting there, because, you know, the situation we would want to avoid is every time one of these is found or seen by a landowner on an ag-zoned land, it, if it were to just disappear, you know, and, I mean, it is what it is. If somebody doesn't have 6,000 per tortoise sitting in their bank account, and they don't even know who to call, or, you know, something along those lines, then that might have an unintended consequence. It'd be nice to avoid that, to where they had someone they could call for, you know, maybe something that was a little more reasonable for our farmers and our agriculture landowners. So I'd like us to look for, into that in the future.
I can, I can summarize quickly our rate resolution that was, that the board has considered previously in past, which includes a market rate for the private development sector, a 20% discount to the market rate for county relocations from county infrastructure, and a 20% surcharge for private sector, private sector outside Manatee County choosing to use a Manatee County site for their recipient program. So we rotate around 20% down or up.
If things were to go according to your plan, I understand it's a little bit of a, of a guess, but how long do you think for this initial size, how long you think it'd take to be full?
That is the question. So, it could go full in two to three years. It could go full in 18 months. We really need to open it up at this point and see what the, the market is out there.
How much demand there is.
There's a lot of activity happening, obviously, here aware of.
And, and certainty is, is a, is a value, and so we are gonna provide a reservation system, so someone can say, I project in nine months, we will be ready to move gopher tortoises on our development site. Can we have the certainty now that they'll be avail, you'll be available for us when we take that decision? And we'll say, yes, we do. Here's a deposit, we would like you to pay, it's non-refundable, and that will hold your reservation on our property for that period of time.
Thank you, no more questions.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna just ask a quick question off of what Commissioner Satcher was talking about, about how long it's gonna take this to fill up. There's not a whole lot to do for entertainment out in Duette, so let's say two tortoises end up in the same burrow one night, and a few weeks later, you have more tortoises. This is gonna, well, this is gonna happen, right, and, and is, are we taking that into account as to how quickly, you know, it could, yeah, the population could, could fill out the space?
Oh, Kathleen Barrett, Natural Resources and Author, gopher tortoise agent. So, right, we, we, we have a very low population at Duette of gopher tortoises. Alyssa and I had done a project out there, and we, we looked at this and said, wow, you know, let's take a good look at this. And it took us about four months to survey this particular property. So, with the quality of Duette and the, it being a preserve property, right, we could have gone up to four tortoises per acre, okay? So the Gopher Tortoise Technical Committee, you know, they recommend 1.52, two per acre for a sustainable population, and that's what we want at Duette, right? It's a beautiful, it's a gem out there, that, that piece of property. And for us to bring in two per acre, which will create a sustainable population, gopher tortoises lay eggs outside their burrows, and very few of them actually survive, you know, with the amount of predation. know, with the amount of predation and things out there. But really, the juveniles for the next 10 years, they aren't going to eat enough food to even affect the adult population.
Okay, you've taken into consideration, you're the agent. I was just wondering if there was a plan for additional...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I can go on and on, I'm sorry.
She could go on and on and on.
Tortoise, yeah, as long as we have a tortoise baby boom plan, we're good. All right, Commissioner Ballard.
Okay, so I think, I think some of my questions were answered. So when I, when I first found out that it was $6,000 per tortoise relocation, I, a couple of months ago, I became interested in this option, which I think is absolutely great, very exciting for the county. How much of the capacity will be reserved for county projects?
So initially, we have 25% reserved for county projects, and we have 25% reserved for our other public partners like FDOT, which also has a big need. So, yeah.
And have those numbers been created in conjunction with Public Works and FDOT?
From what we're seeing on Public Works site and what they need to move offsite, that should be sufficient for them for quite some time.
Okay. And I was, I was actually a little surprised to see how quickly you anticipate that this is going to fill up. But we have these other phases available. Will we start permitting for the next sites as this one is open, so that we have basically no gap in service?
Right. So obviously, we wanted to start getting our first fees in to start covering those administrative costs because obviously the seed money has to be reimbursed back in. So, yeah, as soon as we start taking our reservations and getting those fees in place, we were going to start contacting FWC again about the next couple of polygons that Kathleen has already picked out.
Awesome. And I know that gopher tortoises have a significant lifespan, and I know that you'll be monitoring them as you go, but once we fill up a quadrant, are we pretty much saying we're done for 25 years? Or do we just kind of monitor as we go and, you know, as the tortoises pass, we can get a new reservation for that quadrant?
Do you want to try that one, too?
Sure.
It's complicated. We'll be monitoring, doing a complete survey every five years.
Okay.
Every five years, and we submit monitoring reports. And we also tag them, so we'll have individual numbers, you know, and, of course, they'll be monitored every, you know, just walkthroughs every month for mortality and things like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be quite a long time.
All right, that's kind of what I figured. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, Charlie, we've talked about this wetland mitigation and the private banks and things like that. Are we going to have the same, are you going to have the same concern, we're going to compete against the open market on this type of event, and the open market's going to come and say, hey, you guys are stealing our business? I mean, I know we've had this conversation many a time about the wetland mitigation.
No, the market is so strong that any person or landowner that wants to dedicate their property for 50 years for tortoise habitat, very few in the state. And so we don't believe we're competing with anybody. We're helping, we're helping build, we're responding to the market rather than competing with the providers. And by providing our own needs first, we're going to take care of ourselves. But on the question of, do, will a private market feel that we are competing unfairly against them? I think if our prices stay in their price range, that would be the same. If we substantially discount and pull the demand that is right now at market rate even across the territory, and we pull into our place because of a much lower price, that's when they might start to feel that their investment has been challenged by a government intervention like this. So if we keep our market rates with their rates, we're all competing, and there's plenty of tortoises to be relocated, and very few market locations where they happen, so.
All right. I see this as another win for the county, so thank you, Charlie. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, just for clarity, so the process right now, we leverage the private entities more often than not presently. Is that how it works?
Wait, can you restate that again?
We leverage the private entities right now because we don't have this mechanism in place, right?
We, yeah, yes, we utilize them.
And, you know, just like any private enterprise, there are some gougers out there, because I can say this, I'm not questioning your market rate, but a deal I did earlier this year using private, it was 2,500 to remove and then 10,000 to take care of. So I'm not questioning your market, but, I mean, it gives us a bit more control over that high end if we had to utilize it, right? So.
Yeah, we actually have heard that recently, and so before we open up our reservation system, we will do another market comparison.
Well, I think there's, I think that was probably on the higher side anyways.
So it's just the market went up and up so quickly as the sites filled up, and a lot, if you go to the FWC website and there's a map viewer, and you see a whole bunch of sites on there, if you actually start to zone in on them, they're private for just private, like people have just had to create their own in order to deal with their own tortoises. They're not really taking from outside. So there's just not a lot of capacity out there right now, so.
Well, we have a lot of projects moving right now, so it gives us control over that. That should not cause a ripple in the private sector because it's our own projects, right? So we get the market rate, 20% discount, it gives us more control over our own projects.
That's correct. Correct.
There will be, obviously, as you can see, at that price per tortoise, Commissioner Satcher identifies a major problem. Some landowners say, I'm not going to go through that. I'm just going to make these things disappear. And the federal government is responding by, the only outcome that that will have is that the rules and protections will be tightened even further. And we don't want to get into situations where, like our eagle protection, where there's a no-development zone around a nest. We don't want to get ourselves in a position where there's a no-development zone around a gopher tortoise nest. So providing the access locally here and keeping the opportunities open is, strikes a good balance between protection of the species and protection of our development.
All right. Thank you, sir. No one else is on the board, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward? To address the board on item number 54, which is the gopher tortoise long-term recipient site out of Duette. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and chair will entertain motions. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Turner. We've held public comment, no one's on the board for discussion, we can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, the item passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you all so much for coming down and for your thorough presentation.
Thank you so much.
It is now 10:52, we're overdue for our 10-minute recess, so we'll recess the meeting now for 10 minutes. We're in recess.
Okay, welcome back everyone. Continuing on in our regular meeting here today, we're on to item number nine under Presentations, Manatee County Summer Internship Program Project Presentations from Property Management, Community and Veteran Services, and the Public Safety Departments. Mr. Bishop, this is your item, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. We're proud to introduce three college interns. We were fortunate enough, two weeks ago, to have approximately fifteen presentations presented to the Director's Meeting. These are three where the students were actually available, one via Zoom to present. We're hoping throughout the year, perhaps when the students are available, we could sprinkle these in agenda items. You'll be wild and dazzled over these presentations. I'm proud to introduce our Kate, our interim HR Director, to introduce.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Clay, Mr. Bishop. Thank you for having us. Like Mr. Bishop said, we have three here available today. And so, without further ado, would you like to step up? Haley, are you going in order? David, which one's first?
Let's go ahead and go with the medians first, since it's under property management. I think it's loaded and queued.
Okay, so David is on Zoom, ready to present. Is it Zoom? Carmine, do you want to step up?
Good morning, everyone. Before I get started, can everyone hear me all right? Is it coming through okay?
It's a little echoey, but we hear you all right, well enough.
Hey, David, before you start, let me just say a couple of things real quick. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Clay, Carmine DiMillo, interim director, property management. Before we get started, it's no lie that I get pretty pumped up about medians, adopted spots, community gardens, and beautification. And I thought it might be appropriate, as Mr. Bishop told me yesterday, that we have our median crew is participating in our new entrance sign by the SRQ Airport on 41. And I don't know if, David, can you pull that up? The rendering is a little off, because I took this sign and did an overlay, so you can see what it looks like to scale, and what it will look like with some landscape. So, the update so far is that we'll be installing some irrigation and electric in the next two weeks, and then we'll start our landscaping. The sign won't be installed until the middle of October. So, that's what we're looking at right now. Wanted to give you an update, because the median crew is going to be participating in that. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce David Weiner. And he, because he has such a polished presentation, he's out in Virginia Beach right now, and he's going to zoom in and do our presentation. David?
All righty. Well, thank you, Dr. Carmine. So, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Clay. My name is David Weiner, and I had the opportunity this summer of working as an intern in property management. And so, this morning, I'll be presenting to you on the median beautification program, which was the subject of my internship. So, specifically, we'll be examining an overview of the program and project itself, some of the progress that's been made so far in the median beautification program, and then concluding with a few recommendations about where to take the median beautification program from here. So, beginning first with an overview of the project itself, if we could go to the next slide. Next, we have an overview of the project itself. So, the focus of my internship over the past couple of months was the southwest Tiff Zone, also known as the Southwest County Improvement District. And so, the focus of my internship was researching road medians located within that southwest Tiff Zone, the map of which you can see on the right side of the screen. And so, the project itself was broken down into three distinct parts. The first was to gather the median data itself, so researching the location of medians throughout the southwest Tiff Zone, along with their owners, whether or not it was owned by the county, the state, or some various third parties, the type of median, whether or not it was a grass landscaped or concrete median, and then a few minor forms of information, such as irrigation data, so on and so forth. The second was to document the progress made so far in the program itself, so researching what medians have been renovated and are currently being maintained by the county, and a lengthy before and after comparison that you'll see in just a few moments. And then finally, to create a projected future for the median beautification program, so researching eligible medians for renovation and maintenance, along with a loose but general cost savings analysis that you'll see towards the very end of this presentation. So, if we can go to the next slide, we'll look at some of the median data specifically. So, on this slide, we have a zoomed in but filled in map of the southwest Tiff Zone, showing all grass and landscaped medians throughout the county. And so, the medians themselves are coordinated to reflect their ownership. So, you can see the medians that are owned by the county, the state, and the handful of medians that are owned by the city of Bradenton or privately owned, leading to a total, as you can see on the screen. Now, we focused on grass and landscaped medians specifically, because those are really the only medians eligible for greenery renovations, as you of course can't really do too much with just a concrete median. But we narrowed it down from here even further, as we can see on the next slide, we focused on county medians specifically for that projected future. If we can move to the next slide. And so, on this slide, we have the county medians specifically. As you can see, they're located and scattered all throughout the southwest Tiff Zone, the total of 167 throughout the county. However, as you'll see in just a moment, and this is really the reason why the median beautification program exists in the first place, this map is only an indication of ownership. It is not, however, an indication as to the actual maintenance level or status of the medians themselves. As you'll see in the following slides, if you can move on to the next one, we have a collection of before medians throughout the county. Now, these are all pictures that were taken roughly within the past month to month and a half, and these are all current county-owned medians all throughout the southwest Tiff Zone. But as you can see, there's really nothing going on in these medians whatsoever, it's just kind of rocky dirt and patchy grass, some dead greenery, and the next ones as well, we can see that too, and just really not too much going on in them, really no aesthetic appeal or aesthetic look whatsoever. If we can go to the next couple of ones, you can just kind of move through them. I don't actually have that ability on my end to change the slides. And then, in some of the longer roads, as you can see on this slide, it's really just patchy grass and sand with just the mulch that is there spilling off the sides, really no aesthetic appeal, and nothing going on in those medians whatsoever. What the median beautification program has done is taken medians that look like the median on the left side of the screen, and turn them into medians that look like the one on the right side of the screen. And as you can see, it's a real night and day difference between the two. You take a median that just is kind of dead greenery and nothing but just some mulch, and turn it into one with luscious greenery renovations, mulch, and just so much greenery and plant life on the second one, and these are the same exact median, maybe you've taken from a slightly different camera angle, and you can see the stark night and day difference between the two. I mean, multiple more instances of this as well in the next couple of slides. Once again, you see the difference between the two. You take dead greenery and just some sand and turn it into something that looks like that. And as you can just cycle through the next couple of slides as well, there's just some more before and after comparisons. These are some Google Earth images of some of the longer road medians, but you can just see how stark the differences between medians that have and have not been renovated by the county. On slides like these, we have some top-down images from drone footage, and of course, some signs moving up all throughout the county, and these just show the work that's been done by our ground crew all throughout county-owned medians, and a few state-owned medians all throughout the southwest Tiff Zone. And you can just cycle through the last couple of slides, these are some more drone images from the top down. And what the median beautification program has done is focused on all medians, so both small medians and longer medians, and so medians that are located on some smaller roads, like maybe in some neighborhoods or less trafficked areas, and then some roads like this, which are definitely more heavily trafficked or heavily populated areas. So, a really wide range of medians, both county and state-owned medians throughout the southwest Tiff Zone. And there has been a lot of progress made on the renovation and maintenance side of the program itself, and you can just skip ahead to the next map slide, when you have a moment. So, on this slide, we have a filled-in map of the medians that have been renovated and are currently being maintained by the county throughout the southwest Tiff Zone. So, primarily county-owned medians, although there are a handful of state-owned medians towards the top left of the southwest Tiff and the middle right, but a total of seventy or so medians that have been finished, with fourteen that are currently in progress, and a few that are ready to start in the near future. And so, that's just an overhead view of the work that has been done. But as you saw towards the beginning of this presentation, there are so many more medians, as you see on this slide, that can be renovated and are eligible for renovation. So, as you see on this final slide right here, a list of the recommended medians and a potential future for the median beautification program. So, you see a handful of state-owned medians and a few, or excuse me, a handful of county-owned medians, and a few state-owned medians on Manatee Avenue West towards the top of the Tiff, a total of forty medians that are A, eligible for renovation, B, are owned by the county, and C, are grass and landscaped medians. Now additionally, the benefit of this program and the benefit of these recommended medians is that it can lead to an increase of both savings and accountability. It increases savings, because generally speaking, the funds for the renovation come out of the general Tiff budget, but by operating in-house and through county employees, you actually increase savings, since you're not operating through a third party or a contractor. And additionally, and almost just as importantly, you drastically increase the accountability on the maintenance side of the program itself, as we'll be able to know who is maintaining the medians, how often they're being maintained, what medians are being maintained, and most importantly arguably, to what standard the medians are being maintained. Because as you saw through a couple of the before pictures towards the beginning of the presentation, the medians, the before pictures specifically, really drastically vary in what they look like, or to what standard they're being quote-unquote "maintained." But as you saw with a lot of the after pictures, for the most part, with a few minor differences, depending on the median, they're primarily held to the same standard. And so, operating in-house increases savings, as it comes from the general Tiff budget, and increases accountability, since we'll know who, when, and how often maintenance is actually being conducted. And so, that's just a snapshot of the projected future for the median beautification program. To summarize what we've talked about this morning, we've just seen an overview of the internship and the southwest Tiff Zone in the Manatee County itself. We've examined some of the progress that's been made so far in the overall program. And then lastly, we've seen a projected future for the median beautification program, and a snapshot of where we'll be going from here. And so, lastly, just to conclude this presentation this morning, I have about a one-minute-long video that just kind of summarizes what the median beautification program is, and a lot of the work that's been done so far. So, if you can go ahead and play that video on your end, and you'll be good to go.
All right, that looks awesome. I thought we were going to watch it a second time.
Great, great job, David. If you can hang on a line for some questions.
Yep, thank you all so much for your time, and open for any questions that anyone may have.
Yeah, great job, David. Great job, David. We have a few Commissioners and Administrator on the board to speak. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, I mean, this is a great project, beautifying things like this. It raises the standards, because if we have unkept medians, it's just a bad look for us, right? So, it's just a statement. I don't really have any questions, because I thought it was a great presentation. I just want to say I have a new personal goal, and that is to be as articulate as David. I'm telling you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with all that, and it's good for property values, it's good for community pride as well. Mr. Bishop.
Yeah, I just want to commend David. As Carmine alluded, he's up in Virginia Beach going to college. When we had this presentation, he took it upon himself to fly down here personally to give the presentation in person. That's how much pride he had in this project. So, I commend you, David, you're very professional. Also, I failed to introduce Jessica, you want to say a few words about the internship too? I should have said that first.
It's okay. Good morning, Board. My name's Jessica Alonso, I work for the HR Department. I'm also the one that was in charge of all of the interns this summer, along with two other team members. They were in the Community and Veteran Services Department, they're unable to be here today, but they were a great part of our internship program. We had thirteen amazing interns this summer. We went from one intern last summer, which was myself, and now I work here, to going to thirteen interns, so we're very proud of our program, and we hope that we continue to grow this program and hopefully make it to thirty interns by next year.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank David, what a great presentation, and I hope County Administrator Bishop has you as a future employee of Manatee County in public works, working on all of our median projects and beautification projects. So, I'd like to thank Carmine for the great job they've done across the county. The new entrance into Manatee County is going to be just phenomenal, and that sign gets up and it gets done, it's going to be very exciting as it enters way into Manatee County. And thank you, Carmine, for all the work you've done out there on the medians, and it's just, and your team and your crews that are out there every day doing that. This is a great program for us. It beautifies the county, I know we've been lacking in that over several years, and redoing the medians. I know in my district, the citizens in my district are very excited, and they're very happy about the way the medians look that have been neglected for a long time, and this is a great program to have. So, I think David is doing the great job he did, and if you guys want to really have an intern, let him sit with the chair for a couple of days. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You implying I'm difficult to work for, sir? Commissioner Ballard, you're up next.
David, great job on the presentation, it was awesome. And the project itself is awesome. I have a couple medians in my district that have been done, and they have made such a big impact. I have gotten so many positive comments just out and about from people in the community, and they just really, really appreciate it. It does bring pride to the community, it makes people feel better about where they live, and it lets them know that the county is thinking about them. So, it's a great project, I love it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Great job, David, great job, Carmine. Appreciate you guys so much, it looks great. All right, who is up next?
Logan, we have Haley Vetter, she's here with Lynn McGrath with the Library Services. She completed a project this summer with GIS capabilities incorporated with our library. So, Haley, you want to take it away?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, good morning Administrator and Attorney. Thank you so much for having me this morning, I'm really excited to present to you today. My name, as she said, is Haley Vetter, and I'm here to present on GIS and the Manatee County Library System. Okay, starting off, who here uses the library? I'd like to see a raise of hands. Hey, I just want participation. Well then, this presentation is for you. I want to include everyone here who uses the library, and maybe even those who could use the library and be persuaded to, because we have a really great system here in Manatee. Okay, so my main ideas today are access to the library and the demographics they serve. So, here in Manatee County, we have six going on seven library locations when our new Lakewood Ranch branch opens. So, when I first started this project, I wanted to look in where our library locations are, and then in turn, where our patrons are across the map. So, starting off with, I created this heat map with our densest areas being these hot, warm colors, with yellow being our most dense populations, and the blue being our most sparse populations. As you can see, our density mainly lies between our central branch here in downtown Bradenton and our south Manatee branch, but we also have people ranging all the way from Parish to around our Rocky Bluff branch, to Lakewood Ranch, and east of what will be our Lakewood Ranch branch, to Anna Maria Island and southwards of that, and we even have some sparse populations going towards Bethany and Maia City. Now, when looking at access to the library, people's ability to get to the library depends on how easily they can travel there by car. A lot of times, library runs are part of somebody's errands, they're not really a whole-day-long thing, and we need to make sure that our people have access easily. So, looking at this map I created, it is all the library locations with three different shapes, I want to say, showing the different ranges of drive times. Our under-five-minute drive time is this kind of teal color, people there can go to the library every day if they wish. Then we have this kind of light-yellow color, that would be those who can reach a library in under ten minutes. Then, as we start to get into the green, it starts to get a little bit murky, it's going to be these longer drive times that go into thirty minutes with traffic. In those areas, people might not be able to get to a library. In those areas, people might not be able to get to a library, it might not be easy, it might not be accessible, and they might opt not to have a card for that reason. Then I also didn't want to forget other travel options. Not everyone in our county is, has a personal vehicle that they have access to every single day, and I wanted to look at what library locations are reasonably accessible from public transit. As you can see from this map here, six out of seven of our library locations are within a walking distance from at least one public transit line. The exception, of course, being Lakewood Ranch, which you can see is not anywhere near one. In the future, we're wanting to potentially look towards creating that access because no matter where you are in the county, you do deserve access to a library. And Lakewood Ranch is going to be amazing, we're very excited for it. Okay, I also wanted to dip our toe into some demographic research, starting off with median age per census tract. This is our most updated recent census. As you can see, it goes from these grayish areas which, in which the median age is under 25, to these very light green colors in which the median age is over 70. Obviously, different demographics have different needs, they have different desires from the public library system. We don't need reading circles for those who are in college, as we all know.
That's, that's a really interesting map, right there, actually. I mean, I'm looking at my district, you know, obviously the island. Commissioner Ballard's district looks really, is, is interesting, it's where it seems like all of the, the young blood in the county is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you can see some very stark differences. And even where we might think it's all an older population, we can see that it pulls down a little bit more towards Lakewood Ranch, we have more of these median ages than people might think.
Yeah.
We don't have entirely retired populations in this county. We're varied.
Okay, thank, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just, that was, that's an interesting map, I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate your comment. And then I wanted to talk about income. As people of different brackets of income might have different demands from the library, including internet access, printing, tutoring options, et cetera. And as you can see here, with this map in particular, measures the percent of households who are over or under 70,000 a year. So considering if you have two or more breadwinners in that household, that's, they're each making less than 40K. And that indicates what they might need from our library system, as well as what our library system might need to tweak to provide those demographics. As you can see, the majority of our population near Central and South Manatee are in those lesser brackets. Now, we don't have time for every demographic I went over, but I have a QR code at the end with maps going over everything from elderly disability rates to Spanish-speaking populations, to access to schools and school relationships to our library branches. And I would really appreciate if any of you could just take a look at that. For future-
Don't think that'll be a problem, you've got us, you've perked all of our interests on, on these maps. Yeah, that's great work.
Well, thank you. For future recommendations, I was going to recommend we get somebody contacted to kind of be a consultant and really look for and make a report based off of the data, data I've consolidated over my internship. Luckily for us, the library has provided a third party through the, I believe it is Friends of the Library Association, and we are at work at that now. I believe I am, I have you all to thank for our new mobile library unit that is up and coming, and we hope that will achieve some of those gaps that I mentioned earlier. Last but not least, I would also recommend maybe a potential partnership with transit to make sure that we get that access to our new Lakewood Ranch branch. And then just an ongoing study of this data as our county is constantly changing and evolving through development and people moving here. I hope you can take some of my recommendations to heart today. I understand that the more we understand our demographics in our county, the better we can organize our resources to make it a better place for all of us. Here's that QR code, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, that was great. All right, Mr. Bishop.
Haley, what year in college are you in, and what college do you attend?
I attend Florida State University, and I am starting my Masters in GIS.
And Commissioners, GIS is the most important thing we have in this, one of the most important things we have in this county, and we're making a big initiative to make sure every department has a GIS analyst, because we have the data, we just don't know what to do with it.
So do we have it locked down or not?
I will just, I'm not interfering, I just want, your QR code campaign has been disabled.
Oh, no!
Just to give you a-
We'll all contact IT about that, very sorry.
I'm not accusing you, I'm just saying, because we all want to see it, so it's just so somebody can turn it back on.
Yeah, of course. Very sorry about that, I'll definitely contact so we can get that fixed and get that to all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Haley, what a great presentation. And I'm sure our Director of Libraries, Ms. Parrott, is gonna use all this information. Would you recommend to the, to our library system that they take this information and that's how we get our bookmobile around? You know, more in Commissioner Ballard's district than probably in my district we need that, which I'm really looking forward to driving that thing. But, but I, I think it's just great recon for the library system to be able to use and say, here's where we need to place, even maybe considering, you know, moving a library or whatever, but great presentation, great job. I was really, really highly impressed.
Thank you. Yes, I hope they'll be able to use a lot of my data to determine where the bookmobile's able to go, and even for existing library locations, to be able to tweak the programs there available to make sure everybody gets the best use of them. So thank you, I really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. I, I did just try to scan the QR code, it said that it had been disabled.
Okay.
But can we make sure all Commissioners are emailed the maps?
Yes, I will, definitely.
Commissioner Ballard.
Good thing you figured that out.
Cruz had just said that, you missed him somehow.
I'm sorry.
I was probably trying to figure it out when you said that, sorry.
We ignored.
So, Haley, thank you so much, this was a really great presentation. I'm, I'm really excited about what the library system will be able to do with all of this data that you've gathered and arranged for us. I, I think, as Commissioner Ron said, it is gonna be so helpful in, in drawing out our routes for the bookmobile, knowing where the need is, you know, where we have those young populations, where we have those populations that don't have as much money, that maybe don't have close access to a physical library. So this is really, really exciting, and I also love the point that you made about ensuring that our programming at each library meets the demographics that we have in the areas. So this is truly, it's, it's invaluable information, so thank you very much, this was great.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz.
First, I just want to be the first to let you know this QR code is disabled. So you should get that taken, I'm surprised no one else has brought that up. So, no, I, I love this presentation, this, this is great. Like I'm looking right now at the patron distribution heat map, and it kind of, sort of reaffirms what, what I and the rest of this board has been saying, because we've been talking about the central library. People ask about other libraries in the system, and I'm like, yeah, typically they're okay, people, people drive to them, and they're, they're in different population centers. But I always make, and this board collectively always makes the argument that between central library and South Manatee library, everybody in between there needs a library, but people aren't in close proximity to a library, and not all of them are on easy transit. So the argument's been made, hey, maybe instead of 25,000 square feet in one place, we should have like 5,000 square feet in five places, to put something near like maybe where the, or, or, you know, the Wakeland School was, and down in Onego and San Lucet, and give it in close proximity. Your heat map kind of reaffirms what we've been saying, is this is the, the most heavily populated area of need for libraries, but they're the most dispersed and distant from libraries. You see all the other ones kind of cluster around the libraries themselves, not coincidentally. I would be interested, and I don't know, maybe these other maps have, i- if we have any kind of, using IP data, if we assessed how many people in the county use like Libyan or electronic systems, you know, to see if maybe you, you see something that says, okay, the further you wait, are you, the further away from the library you are, the more likely you are to use electronic versions, just because proximity doesn't afford you the ability to go get a hard copy. That, that may blend this out a little bit more in terms of utilization. But, but I love this, this is, this is hugely helpful, both about the, the bookmobile we're looking at, the smaller footprint libraries we're looking at, this is great, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate your comments, and I'd love to look into how digital versus physical use applies to our demographics across the county. The library has my information, and I said I'd be more than happy to add to my project as we want to get the biggest picture of our county as we can to suit the most people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clegg, I would just comment that the Clerk of the Court, Angel Colaniso, recently determined that a purchase of identical data was not for a public purpose, and determined that it was not, that it needed to be reimbursed. So, your office should anticipate, I would think, an investigation by the clerk into what the interns have done here, because she doesn't feel that it serves a public purpose. So you should be prepared for that investigation. Of course, if there's not one, then we could only determine that the previous investigation was politically motivated. But, thank you so much, who's our next intern?
Thank you, we have 10 more of these, so, but lastly, we do have, so thank you for taking the time to listen to all of these great presentations this morning. Lastly, we have Jana Ramos Ramos here with Public Safety Department. She was mentored by Matt Myers, and it's very fitting, given the season and the proclamation this morning that it's emergency preparedness month, so please.
Good morning. As she said, my name is Jana Ramos Ramos, I've been working with emergency management this summer, and I have created an outreach plan. If you can, oh, sorry. There we go. Starting off with some challenges that we've faced, we've noticed that socially and economically vulnerable populations within the county are not sufficiently prepared for hurricane emergencies. We've also noticed that at times, these populations are resistant to leave their homes when it is absolutely necessary. In order to face some of these challenges, I was able to do some research, and I created some outreach materials for, for handouts for the community. Starting off with our target audience, we want to target the communities of people living in mobile homes and lower-income and apartment housing. First, let's talk a little bit about the mobile home community. We have around 47,000 people living in mobile homes within the county as of 2022, and we are targeting them due to the vulnerability that their, of their homes, you know, they have to evacuate as soon as an evacuation is announced. And we want to focus our efforts around the West Bradenton and Ellington area, which is where most of the safety presentations that the coordinators do are around that area. Second, the low-income and apartment housing, we have around 39,000 units occupied as of 2022 as well. And we want to target these communities because sometimes their, their buildings or their homes are not in the conditions to withstand the effects of a hurricane. So those are the reasons. Moving on to the strategy and the goal, so after doing some research and reading up on emergency preparedness, I found that most of the information that is out there and that we put out there is about preparing yourself, or your kids, or your pets. We not only want to emphasize preparing yourself, your kids, and your pets, but we also want to emphasize preparing your home. The goal for this is so that people feel less resistant and more comfortable following evacuation protocols when it comes to it. You know, we have to understand that these are communities that are less likely to recover quickly after an emergency such as a hurricane or any other natural disasters. So to put this strategy in, oop, my bad, to put the strategy in practice, I made two different rat cards for the target audiences. Both of these have a checklist in the front and a list, a list of resources in the back. They're both different just to fit the needs, like I said. And I made these for print instead of for online platforms, due to the fact that we don't know how many people are able to, you know, get online and look up information on the resources or the steps that they can take to, you know, prepare their homes. Not only that, but some of these residents are older in age, so we want to make sure that we are taking the, the correct strategy to effectively communicate. In addition to that, I was able to create a brand kit for the division, along with like a color palette and some fonts that they can utilize. I was able to update their master presentation, and along with that, I was able to update their current handout materials or current outreach materials. And finally, I was able to create a newsletter post for a community that reached out to us, among utilizing the, the color palette and the typefaces and fonts. Now, these are just some future suggestions. I believe that having an automated email service for the distribution of the planning, of the emergency planning guides would make it easier to distribute the information out there to the residents. We want to, you know, inform everybody, not just a certain type of people. And not many people go into public buildings nowadays, so we just, you know, you want to inform everybody. Along with that, social media, I believe that maximizing the use of social media would be beneficial. Like I said, we only, we don't only want to target a certain amount of people, we want to target everybody, and we want everybody in the county to be prepared. And finally, for outreach, I believe that partnering up with people in other departments would be beneficial, seeing as, you know, sometimes they go out into our communities to do presentations or to have meetings, and it would be a good way to distribute that information. In addition to that, I believe that creating a permanent outreach role within the division would be beneficial, seeing as climate is constantly changing, you know, technology is advancing, and information needs to be updated, so we have to keep coming up with new strategies to effectively communicate with the community. That is all that I have for you.
Well, that's plenty. Commissioner Ron is on the board first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jana, great, great presentation.
Thank you.
And like we just did, being prepared is everything, right?
Yes.
Couple quick questions on your deliverables, are, are they also in Spanish?
Yes, they are in Spanish.
And for the deliverables, especially, I have a lot of mobile homes in my district.
Yes.
Would you suggest using possibly the postal service to-
Yes, so-
Work with us and getting this, getting these deliverables out, especially to the older, older population?
Yeah, so that was part of our idea as well, I just forgot to mention it. We were hoping to not only have it as handouts, but also as mail inserts, so that way everybody has, you know, something to base their preparedness off of.
All right, thank you very much, great presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, smart, I like that. All right, Commissioner Ballard.
So, great presentation, I, I think that my, my district is, is one of the districts that's heavily impacted by, by the issues that you've been highlighting. I, I think that the idea for mail inserts is, is really, really good, I think we should take advantage of that if we can.
I agree.
And I had one additional question. And now it's left my mind. It was not about gopher tortoises. Nope, sorry, can't remember it. It's okay.
All right, we'll try to come back to you. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, great presentation, I really like seeing young minds at it because you guys know better than what we do. So email execution that you mentioned, like MailChimp or something like that could be utilized, is that what?
Yes.
One of the mechanisms?
Yes.
And social media, so all platforms?
Yeah, so Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. I've been looking at the Public Safety Facebook, and there's a lot of traffic on there, so.
So like the GORPA poll, so we could do one, and it'll hit all platforms, something like that?
So you would have to tailor the, the post by the platform, because it's different audiences, so it just, it depends.
See, this is why we need young people, because old people don't understand.
Yeah, it just, it just depends on the, on the platform that you want to post it on, yeah.
Yeah, so it does need to be specific, so you-
Yes.
You don't want the same message going to Facebook, Instagram.
Right, right. So, at least for Facebook, it is an older audience, so the information would have, would have to be different. And then for Instagram, since it is like a younger audience, it would be more of a visual aspect of the post.
Great, I mean, we could use this in, in other communications too.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes, sir. We'll work with the utility department, Evan, and see if we can put these in the utility bills.
Thank you. I believe that's, that was our last presentation.
Yes.
I would just thank you all very much and thank Charlie for encouraging me to put this on the agenda. I was hesitant, but in the end, I think it was really educational to all commissioners and I think it was an important part of the meeting. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it. And Mr. Lichauer apparently has brought flowers.
Thank you.
Steve Lichauer, Deputy Director of Public Safety. The flowers are from Deputy Chief Matt Myers, her mentor, and from Public Safety and Emergency Management. I'd like to present Jana with our challenge coin also, because as you can see, this is very valuable information, especially after what happened during Ian. So congratulations. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you all so much. Okay, moving right along here. We're going to go to citizen comments for future agenda items. I don't know if anyone, hold on, we'll pull it up. We do, we have three people who have signed up. Joyce Jordan, followed by Fred Hammond, and then Kathy Bridwell. After the three folks that have signed up go, then we'll open this up to the, to the audience, to anyone who would like to come forward. So don't worry if I didn't call your name, you'll still have an opportunity. So this is citizen comment on future agenda items, so it's for items that are not on today's agenda, but are likely to appear on a future agenda before this board. And each person gets three minutes. When you reach the podium, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item. Ma'am?
Joyce Jordan, Manatee County. Good morning. You all know me, except for Commissioner Turner, so I am Joyce Jordan. I am one of the 11 volunteers that were fired by Jody Fisk on July 3rd, 2023, from the Manatee County Animal Welfare. I was a dog walker volunteer there for over 12 years. What justifies firing 11 volunteers? Apparently, nothing, because we haven't been given any reason, even though our handbook states that no volunteer will be terminated without a meeting with a supervisor to discuss it. Why were we terminated by Jody Fisk? She's the director of public safety. She doesn't even know us or what we do at the shelter. She is micromanaging animal services. Maybe she should micromanage EMS instead. Maybe we should, she has no experience with animal services, yet she is making decisions that should be made at a much lower level of management. We have a volunteer favorite, Chili, that we all love, that is very stressed at the shelter. We have video of him jumping up and down in his kennel because he's so stressed. So Kathy Bridwell, one of our best volunteers, but who was terminated, followed protocol and wrote to Lauren Tryon, foster coordinator at Manatee County, asking to take Chili home for an overnight visit, which she has done many times in the past. But this, she received a response from Jody denying her the overnight with Chili. She said that the experts say that overnight visits stress the dogs even more, but this has been proven to be untrue. Best Friends Sanctuary has a longstanding sleepover program in which volunteers take dogs home overnight. They have studied it and they have seen that the dogs do better. And we have seen this every time they come home. They're, they come back from being out, they're much calmer. Chili was a perfect house guest at Kathy's house and didn't poop in the house at all. He poops all over his kennel at the shelter and then smears it all over the kennel when he repeatedly jumps up and down. So he is being neglected because Jody wants to punish volunteers who she fired. Regular volunteers are still taking dogs home for overnights, so the difference is that Kathy was fired. But there was no reason for any of us to be fired. The dogs love us and the staff and the volunteers want us back. Jody refuses to speak to us and is denying us the privileges of a volunteer when we did nothing to deserve this treatment. This is blatant discrimination.
Thank you, ma'am. Reverend Fred Hammond, Reverend Fred Hammond, okay. First and last name, county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
Kathy Bridwell, Manatee County. I'm one of the fired, 11 fired volunteers from the Manatee County Animal Welfare Dog Shelter, pleading our case again. But before I do, months ago, you as a board challenged the shelter and graciously offered to host an adoption event in each of your respective districts. That's an awesome idea, but there appears to have been no steps taken to make that happen. I've attended a couple of commissioner town hall meetings recently at libraries and one of the libraries offered its large meeting room as a potential adoption event location. What a win for everyone if the shelter would schedule these adoption events. You've already authorized an additional $2,500 for the shelter's monthly advertising budget. Our location in Palmetto is lousy, so to get these dogs out into your districts could significantly reduce the shelter population. I'm sure you wonder why don't, why don't you just volunteer somewhere else? Because the need is the greatest at the only public shelter in Manatee County. Most local rescues have 10 or less dogs. Manatee County has over 100. Commissioner Cruz, you stated that you had heard two sides to the firing story. Why then as the fired, why then as the fired are we not told what that negative side is? What motive would we have as volunteers to do anything but what's in the best interest of not only the dogs, but also the best interest of the shelter? We were not employees nor we, nor were we protecting a paycheck. Our sole purpose at the shelter was for the betterment of the dogs. Not a one of us deserved to be fired. The burden of proof lies solely on the county to prove otherwise and the reason it's not been, and in my opinion, the reason it's not already provided proof is because there is no proof. When we were fired, the net effect was firing almost half of the dog handling volunteers. These dogs were already having a hard time. Now it's become unbearable for them. Dogs not getting out of their kennels enough lessens their chances for adoption. The stress of being confined to their kennels for relentless hours causes them to have behavior issues as it would for any of us. Getting the dogs out of their kennels more frequently also reduces potential workers' comp injuries. A dog that is penned up for extensive hours of time is harder to handle. It will not want to walk calmly to the outside because it's desperate to get out. Surprisingly, most of the dogs attempt to be housebroken. Can you imagine their daily discomfort in the current scenario? This firing act has also created a huge element of fear for the current volunteers who wonder if they might be next. It appears for the, it appears the motive for the firing was to silence those who had the audacity to respectfully advocate for the dogs. I personally know all of the volunteers who were fired and the quality of these volunteers who have selflessly given of their time and talents. I wish that the dogs were not suffering as a result of this decision. Why would a county-run facility choose to get rid of free labor? These same free laborers are the ones who were walking dogs, cleaning kennels, taking photographs and creating social media posts advertising the dogs. As fired volunteers, we will continue to plead for our reinstatement. I can assure, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there Fred Hammond, is Fred Hammond here? He's on the list as well. Okay, not seeing him, then we'll open up this up to the audience. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to come forward to address the board on a future agenda item? First and last name, county of residence, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Mark Barnaby, Manatee County, and I'm here today. I, I thought I'd be on the agenda, but we're not, so I'm here and I might cut down my presentation, might go just a tad over three minutes. By the way, I'm all for the new tradition of giving flowers to everybody who speaks. I think that's great. With me today are Tara Saul, who's also a board member and our engineer and a mother of one of our students, as well as Lewis Parker, who's a board member and one of our founders. Just to, just to, for those of you who we've not had a chance to talk to, Visible Men Academy has an all-boys charter school that was opened in August of 2013. Its mission is to shape young minds into exceptional individuals who embody outstanding character, serve, and to serve as exemplary sons, brothers, friends, and future leaders, husbands and fathers. Beyond academics, VMA focuses on instilling essential character values for transformative growth. The majority of our, of our students are underprivileged, are from, underprivileged backgrounds. 94% are residing in homes that are below or within poverty level households. Currently, we are serving about 90 to 100 boys. Our current enrollment is actually 91 at the present time. Now, why are we here? The county sold Visible Men Academy a five-acre parcel on 9th Street East for $85,000. I believe that was to pay off a lien that they, that had been on the property. In 2018, the county granted a corrective deed, which required buildings to be planned, processed and constructed by September 14th of 2023. If not, the property would then revert to Manatee County. As noted in my July letter to the commission, we cannot meet that time requirement and, and that's why we're here. We appreciate what the county did, very much so. It helps school and our students very much and we appreciate that effort. And one might understand why some of the, in the county might think that Visible Men Academy has had enough time to finish construction. But I think that would cut short a much more complex background and, which needs to be considered and ignores a much bigger picture. VMA, VMA has been, began fundraising and has raised donations and capital commitments of over $1 million, and of which $500,000 has already been paid to VMA. Now, I've been involved in capital campaigns on at least three projects in this county. They've all gone more than five years to get done, frankly. Raising money is a challenge for any not-for-profit and it takes a long time to do that, particularly with some of the situations we had. But on top of it, in this case, we had a number of situations. COVID hit, affecting fundraising and academic performance in enrollment, which we had to address. Recession hit, which further affected fundraising, and then the fear of not, see, I thought I'd need to clear the line, not completing the work necessary to prevent the reversionary clause from wiping out the work, essentially wiped out everything in 2023 from us being able to move forward. VMA is providing important education and life skills to some of our most at-risk students. This property is near the intersection of 63rd Avenue and 9th Street East, which is one of the counties at most at-risk neighborhoods. VMA simply needs more time, a little more time, and a, and a clarification R and D to make it clear that the Visible Men Academy can meet the clause by placement of brick and mortar buildings, modular buildings or portable buildings on the site. We've also, by the way, during the last couple of years, sharpened our pencils and revised our plans to be more realistic. Current plans being we can open a campus on the site with, we believe, about $1.7 to $2 million, if permitted to use the portables or modular buildings at least initially. And again, we have pledges of over $1 million. VMA has, has to finish going through the county planning department. We had proposed a two-year process to do that, another two years to complete site development. We actually think, and if that's a concern, we think that can actually be done in approximately two years and we can commit to that. We've come a long way in the last two years. Enrollment is up by 50%. Student achievement is up significantly for this, for this school and many of the Visible Men Academy students are performing well above grade average. This provides great opportunity for the county. I, I would also say this, this is a five-acre site. I'm not sure what the other potential uses are. I don't think it'd be a very good site for multifamily development. There may be some other or less, other uses that the county may have, such as a community center, which could be located on the site depending on its size, and we'd be happy to work with the county on that. We request the county commission direct staff to work with the county staff and the county attorney to bring this matter back to, on an agenda, I think September 12th is your next, next agenda, next meeting for consideration and thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Next, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
Good morning. John Banks, Manatee County, District 3. I just wanted to speak in support of the Tunnels to Towers proposition that I think is going to be coming back before this board shortly. I attended the town hall meeting on Saturday morning and was really surprised to see how many people I knew there and how much widespread support this, that program has in our community. And I came up just to point out the irony that we had a program presented this morning and approved by you guys for permanent housing for homeless gopher tortoises.
That was an agenda item, sir, so you have to speak to other matters.
Okay, but it relates to this future agenda item. You know, we can, we can provide that support, you know, in our county for gopher tortoises. The least we can do is the similar type of support for the people, people that have served our nation in the military. And I hope that you guys will be supporting that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next speaker. First and last name, your county of residence, sir, and you'll have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners and Mr. Clegg and Mr. Bishop. I am Louis Parker. I live in Manatee County. I am a co-founder and emeritus board member of Visible Men Academy reference by Mr. Barnaby. Today, I seek your partnership in shaping a brighter future, brighter future for extending the deadline of our reverter clause. Visible Men Academy, since 2013, has become a beacon of transformation and hope in all our boys, in all boys' public charter schools that address the educational crisis faced with impoverished boys. We embarked upon this mission to give these boys opportunities through academic excellence and character development. Our institution is dedicated to educating the boys who grapple with the effects of poverty. 95%, 94% of our families experience that. And while significant, while 73% of the boys of color from Bradenton, we see beyond strive, striving to ensure their circumstances do not define them. For example, 11 of our boys now attend Out of Door Academy. To provide some perspective, I see myself in these boys. I grew up just like many of the students. I was raised in Pittsburgh in a tough neighborhood called Homewood, living in poverty. My World War II veteran father was brilliant, a hard worker, but couldn't read or write because education was not afforded him, afforded him, raised in Alabama. In 1969, I was accepted to a program called Better Chance, a visionary nonprofit that bridges students of color with quality education for 60 years. I attended Fields Academy and Dover. In fact, I was in the same board, same dormers Jeb Bush, if you need any stories. I attended University of Pennsylvania and Harvard Business School. I worked in the corporate world and investment banking and completed my mass, my career with GE. At GE, I became a corporate VP under Jack Welch, who's one of the top 40 executives of the country. I share this not as a personal accolade, but to highlight the immense potential that lies within the students when given a chance. Success wasn't just about, for me, just climbing corporate ladders. It's about giving back and paving the way and serving others, just as we're taught by Jesus. Our unique Shine Program emphasizes academic excellence in integral values, selflessness, honesty, integrity, niceness and excellence. Under leadership of Dr. John J. Genju as the Principal of 2021, a native of Bradenton, his educational journey was coveted as a NASA intern. He majored in biology and chemistry and taught for 14 years at Braden River High School and SSAS. Braden River High School Chemistry is still used in the curriculum he developed. Since he started, our academy has made remarkable strides, especially post-pandemic. From a concerning 6% grade level achievement in math and English in our third graders last year, our students rebounded to achieve 60% on grade, in fourth grade, 60% on grade level and 90% in, in reading, 90% in math within a year, a testament to the resilience and determination. Yet we find ourselves at the crossroads, crossroads. COVID-19 hindered our expansion plans, strained resources and deeply affected our students in learning. Despite these setbacks, our academic performance, despite these setbacks, our academic performance remains robust, surpassing our 2018 performance when we were in A grade. But real, but to realize our vision, we need continued support. We are now looking at a cost-efficient modular expansion. In conclusion, supporting Visible Men Academy is not merely endorsing a school. It's about investing in our sure future, a future where young men stand tall as community leaders irrespective of their backgrounds. Today, I request your help in ensuring this future remains within reach. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am, for public comment on a future agenda item. First and last name, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Good morning and thank you, Commission, for hearing us here today. I'm, my name is Tara Saul. I'm a Manatee County resident and I am requesting that the Visible Men Academy, in addition to Mr. Barnaby, be put on the future agenda for the next meeting. And I wanted to speak to you as to what some of my role has been in this project to date. I am a civil engineer and I have a practice here in Manatee County and I also have a stepson that attends VMA. My exposure began with the school in 2021 in November when we enrolled him after numerous failed attempts in traditional and non-traditional education. And so we may not meet the traditional demographic of what a VMA student is, but I can say that from a personal standpoint, the VMA experience has transformed my stepson from being a child who. who had no place to being a play, a young man who understands self-responsibility and also understands and has the ability to flourish in a way that I don't think he would have otherwise been able to do so. And so, part of watching this, even in the first month of his time, I found out that the VMA owned this parcel next door to where they are currently operating and by, and that they were having a difficult time moving the development forward. And as a civil engineer with a background in land development, working for large corporations in this area, I felt compelled to help. And by doing so, we were able to, from my time in meeting first with the principal in December of 2021, from that time, in 2022, we developed two different plan options, site plan options for the development of the parcel in a more realistic fashion than the fifteen million dollar previous renderings that had been done, because there's an acknowledgement that, as that might be the hopes and dreams, we need something that would facilitate the school as it is now with the ability to expand in the future. So those two different site plans, one was just a traditional moving the portables over with the modular option that they, because the school currently owns four portables and getting additional portables to be able to service the amount of students that they have now. The other option was looking at the southern parts, the northern part of the parcel as additional housing potential for workforce or families. And that's to acknowledge that, as was mentioned, ninety-four percent of our families are below, at or below the poverty line. There is also a struggle with the teachers that work there, that there's potential for staff. And so, we do have the site plan. In addition to the site plan, we have completed our environmental assessment. We have completed our boring studies for ground. I'm sorry, can I?
If you can, want to quickly finish your thought.
And we have also done our topographic and tree survey, and we have been setting up and prepared to submit to proceed this project forward for the first time, I think, in seven years, and that was all done in the calendar year of 2022. And then there was the reverter clause that we were hesitant on and were needing clarity on, and that is what has led us to the point of where we are today is it, and I understand that there's a lot of history with VMA before the commission. I think at this point in time, we finally have the right team in place to begin moving forward, and the amount of growth and potential that the school exhibits today versus two years ago is significantly different. And so, I would like to compel and ask the board to consider putting us on the next agenda to address the, with staff, the potential on how we could partner together with extending the reverter clause and combining a project potentially or allowing the school to operate. I thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on a future agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners, it's twelve oh seven. I'm going to recess this meeting for lunch. We'll return at one-thirty.
The first Wednesday of each month, all Alice's families are invited to attend. And entrance into the museum is paid for. We set up about 25 different literacy tables. Families are invited to come to the literacy tables, meet teachers, meet community resources, and all the materials that they receive are taken home. They use those materials to help their child's literacy development. All the literacy engagements are designed by the Manatee County School District. The SOAR-N4 program is all supported by philanthropy and donations from the community. Amy and Steve Weinberger have supported the SOAR-N4 community initiative for years. When they were traveling, they had seen the concept of Story Walk and wanted to bring that back to Manatee County and combine that with our SOAR-N4 program. The future SOAR-N4 will be provided at Lincoln Park. This is a way for literacy to be in our neighborhoods 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When families come to the park, they're able to experience a book on panels. The donation that's being provided by Amy and Steve will buy the frames and the panels that will demonstrate the storybook that will be placed in Lincoln Park. I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Thompson, who is also with the Department of Early Learning with the school district.
Hi, everybody. I have the book that we're going to be, which I think is on the next slide, using. And I thought it was kind of appropriate for this meeting because the first three hours was all about the environment, and it's a walk in the forest, but there are no tortoises in the book. Other animals, but no tortoises. So as a part of SOAR-N4, we highlight a book every month. And so four years ago, with the help of the Manatee County Library System, we surveyed people in the community and came up with the list of 36 books that we use for SOAR-N4. So that list was given to Ms. White, and I believe Commissioner Ballard, you picked this book. So, and, and the first one is going in hopefully Lincoln Park, which is in your area. So this is a book we're going to use. If you want to look at it, you can Google "A Walk in the Forest," read aloud, and you can listen to the book. But it has a lot of pretty pictures and text that will be on the panels. And another thing we will do in conjunction with teachers is have suggestions for parents and kids on things to do, like it might say, "Do a pose like a tree," or "Make a sound like a bird." This is going to offer us the opportunity to also give literacy activities and physical activities that families can do together while they're at the park. Oh, sorry, this is Jeremiah Bowman.
Hello, Commissioners. Jeremiah Bowman, Visual and Performing Arts with the school district. One of the really neat items that we're going to be including with the Story Walk panels is a program called Autocast. So when parents and their students go up to the panels, there'll be a QR code that they can use to download this free app. And then this app is all based off GPS. And so the app automatically pops up their location, and it says, "Are you near Panel 1?" And they say, "Yes." And then it will have options of whether they can hear the story being read to them in English, or Spanish, or other languages that we determine. And we can also include additional resources there as links for them to use as they're kind of experiencing the book. So, and along with, you know, actually having the book read to them, they can then go to the next activity like Ms. Thompson was saying. This also gives us a great opportunity to empower our families. We also plan on using the panels to provide more information about the county's parks, provide literacy resources, and we are hoping that this is just the beginning of a partnership where we can do future expansion with the county and the school district. So, thank you so very much, and we look forward to working together.
All right. Thank you all. Commissioner Ballard is on the board for comment. Ma'am?
So I was so excited when, when Molly brought this opportunity to me a couple of months ago. I, I loved the, the idea of, of bringing books and literacy to kids where they are. You know, not everybody is a regular library user, so when we can get a book out into the community really easily accessible, I, I think it's an absolutely great thing to do. And I can't, and I, I did get to select the book, which I was really excited about. Trying to choose a book that, you know, fit with the theme of, you know, you're walking through the park, so "A Walk in the Forest" is, uh, really fits with that. And so I'm, I'm really excited to see kids utilize that and hopefully develop that love of reading and learning at an early age. So thank you all so much for the, for the donation, and I hope to see it expanded into other parks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We're going to open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 56, which is the exception of the, accepting the donation from SOAR, SOAR-N4? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll entertain motions. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Ballard to approve the item. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We've held public comment, no one's on the board for discussion, we can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you so much to everybody from SOAR-N4 and the school district for coming down. Thank you for your donation as well. All right. We're going to move into Public Works. Item number 50, Adoption of Ordinance 23-89, Fort Hammer Road from US 301 to Buckeye Road and Moccasen-Wallow Road from US 301 to US 41, Regulating Engine Compression Release Braking. This is presentation upon request. Would anyone like to request a presentation on item number 50? Okay. Hearing none, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 50 on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one, we will close public comment at this time, and we'll entertain motions on item 50. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Satcher to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. We've held public comment, no one's on the board for discussion, we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, item number 50 passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Onto item number 51, which is Adoption of Ordinance 23-86, Golf Cart Crossing on Erie Road at Marie Lane. Would anyone like a presentation on this item? Okay. Hearing none, we'll open the item up to public comment. Anyone from the public like to come forward to address the board on item number 51, Adoption of the Golf Cart Crossing? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll entertain motions. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Satcher to approve the item. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We've held public comment, no one's on the board for discussion, we can cast our votes at this time. And it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to Utilities, number 52, Adoption of Resolution R-23-139 and Ordinances 23-111, Establishing Revised Solid Waste Rates. We have pretty much discussed and briefed and debated this to death. Would anyone like a present, another presentation on item number 52? Okay. Hearing none, we will open item 52 up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 52, Establishing Revised Solid Waste Rates? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll entertain motions. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz to approve item number 52, and that's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. No one's on the board for discussion, we've held public comment, we can cast our votes now. Item number 52 passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. We'll move on to Regular Agenda Administrator Items, number 53. Number 53 is Sarasota Manatee Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee Who is here from staff?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Clark Davis. I'm Deputy Director, Public Works Traffic Management. This item is for appointment of members of a standing committee that serves the MPO Policy Board. It's called the Citizens Advisory Committee. They're one of two main committees that see a lot of the things that come before the MPO Board as public hearing matters or as various plans. It's a 17-member committee, and under their bylaws, several of those members are to be appointed by Manatee County Government, two of them in the unincorporated area, and four at-large members that could be from the unincorporated area or the municipalities. And there are some, some expectation that you get, say, a good representation geographically and in terms of demographics, but there's also a couple of requirements that they have at least one member that's at-large and from the disabled community, and another that's at-large and minority community. You have before you or in your packet a matrix, so all of the candidates that submitted applications. I don't know any of them well myself, but from looking through the applications, it looks like that each one is qualified. I think there are some that are, have identified as at-large members that could also be considered unincorporated members if you end up struggling to fill a couple of the spots based on the criteria required.
All right, Clark, do you have some sort of a matrix that you can display on here, sort of per seat? In other words, like if, if I want to start with number, like, at-large minority, do you have a matrix of only the candidates who qualify for that?
I do not have them broken down that way for you, but I can walk you through some of them. If you want to work from that perspective, so start with the minorities. Extavia Bailey is at-large, but also qualifies as unincorporated minority. Peter Macias is at-large minority, also could be considered unincorporated. Cesar Garcia is at-large minority, also unincorporated, and I believe those are the minority.
Okay, those are the three?
Yes, sir.
Extavia, Extavia and Caesar, and who was the, I didn't know the third?
Peter Macias.
And Peter. Let's see, yes.
Should be the first three names on, on the list, yeah, that's on the screen now.
I coached a Macias at Manatee, I wonder his relation. Okay. So let's start with that. Let's start with at-large minority. I'll open that up to nominations at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a nomination.
Yes.
For the at-large minority, I'd like to nominate Extavia Bailey.
Okay, Extavia, Extavia's been, you don't have to second these. Is there anyone else? Would, would anybody like to nominate anyone other than Extavia?
Claire Havitt.
Okay, then we'll entertain motions to close nominations for the at-large minority. Entertaining motions to close the nominations. Okay, motion to close by Commissioner Cruz, he needs a second. Seconded by Commissioner Ron. Will verbally vote on closing nominations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, Extavia Bailey, well, nominations are closed, and with only one candidate or applicant, Extavia Bailey is then appointed to the at-large minority position. All right, then we'll go to at-large disabled. Clark, are you able to give us the names for that one?
Yes, sir. So the next two on the list and that's on the screen now are from the unincorporated area, so going to the bottom of the page, Eugene Hendry is at-large disabled. On the next page, Gary Brumley, and then Patricia Simmons.
Patricia Simmons. I have Henry as a parish fire commissioner, and then Brumley is a disabled vet, Kentucky National Guard. Okay. We'll open up nominations for the at-large disabled position with Eugene, Gary, and Patricia as your potential applicants.
Nominate the Henry.
I figured you would. Okay, so Commissioner Satcher nominates Eugene Henry. Would anyone like to nominate anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain motions to close nominations at this time. Motion, motion to close by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Ron. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, we voted to close nominations unanimously by a vote of seven to zero, and as a result, Eugene Henry, the parish fire commissioner, is the only applicant, and therefore he is appointed. All right, now on to the at-large folks, which I think you're going to have a much longer list here.
I'm going to nominate Caesar Garcia.
Caesar?
He was part of the original group before we put this on table.
Am I allowed to nominate Mr. Clegg?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to nominate John Minetti. Used to be the man, general manager of the Columbia out on St. Armin's forever.
How many seats do we have for at-large?
Two.
We have two. Oh, we have two. Well then, I guess I could have waited. Any, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. I tell you, I'm going to withdraw.
Well, there's only two. Why don't we, can we just vote and fill the two?
Okay, that works too. Okay, so then we'll entertain motions.
Motion to close nominations.
Okay. We have a motion to close by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Turner. All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Madam Clerk, the nominations are closed unanimously. Mr. Clegg, I mean, are these, you want to do two votes?
Yeah, one for each person.
Okay. Let's start it this way then. Hint, hint, nudge, nudge. All in favor of Caesar, please raise your hands. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so Caesar is appointed, seven to zero. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of appointing John Minetti, raise your hands. Okay, we have seven there as well, so seven to zero. Does that suffice? Okay. Then I have, we have two. Wait, that's it, right?
That's two unincorporated.
Two unincorporated.
There's only two applied.
And only two applied? Okay, can you, what are the, what are the names of the two that applied for the unincorporated, sir?
The, the two that applied for that position are Cameron Miller and Jeffrey Orenstein. There are, by my reckoning, several of the at-large candidates you've not selected yet that would also qualify for unincorporated area. You know, they, they have residence.
Okay.
Their home address is out, is in the unincorporated area of the county.
Okay, so we'll entertain motions, and we'll do them, we'll do two separate. So we're just going to do one seat, and then we're going to do the second seat. Entertaining motions on the first open, the first vacancy for unincorporated.
Nominate Peter Macias.
Peter Macias.
Does he qualify? Do we know?
Does Peter Macias qualify, sir?
That's what they said.
He is one of the ones that I believe has an unincorporated area address.
Okay, perfect.
I was trying to vet those this morning.
Good for Peter. And any other nominations?
Nominate Cameron Miller.
Cameron Miller. Any other nominations? Entertaining motions to close nominations.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Satcher.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bearden. All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we've closed nominations. So then we'll start with the first seat, Peter Macias. All in favor, we'll just do this verbally, all in favor of appointing Peter Macias to the first empty seat, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, he's appointed to seat one. And then Cameron Miller for seat two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, Cameron is appointed to seat number two. Clark, how'd we do?
Excellent. I believe you filled all your vacancies.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hold public comment on this item. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the appointments to the Sarasota Manatee Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment on this item. We've already held item 54, we'll move on to item number 55, Adoption of Resolution R-23-122 for Approval and Submittal of the Manatee County 2024-2033 through 2033 Transit Development Plan, or the TDP. Major update to the Florida Department of Transportation, F.DOT District One Public Transit Office. That's a mouthful, item number 55. Who's here to present?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Deanuntis, Interim Transit Division Manager at Manatee County Area Transit. I have Sarah Goolsbee here, our consultant from Benash, and she's going to give you about a 10-minute presentation on the TDP.
Sarah Goolsbee with Benash. We are the planning consultant for MCAT. So before I get into the TDP process and the recommendations we came up with, I just wanted to go over what a TDP is and what it is not. A TDP is a strategic plan for transit. It's a 10-year vision of transit needs in the community. And for this Transit Development Plan, this is for years 2024 to through 2033. And in this plan, we assess existing conditions, which include population and demographics of the county, and also includes looking at the existing transit services. We engage the public to find out what the public feels that is needed in terms of transit.
I'm just going to tuck in this a little bit.
Oh, thank you. We developed a list of transit needs, and then we developed a, some financial constraints and an implementation plan for the 10-year period. The TDP is a FDOT requirement. Transit agencies must develop a, a major update every five years. And then in the interim years, an annual progress report is submitted to FDOT. And in this annual progress report, the transit agencies will report on their accomplishments for the year and report on the, on the status of the implementation plan as well. And the TDP is not a budget or a binding agreement. If there are any changes to the community needs or any changes in available funding, these changes can be reflected in the annual progress report. So we had a pretty extensive outreach effort for the TDP. We did an onboard survey to survey transit riders. We also had a public online survey to ask the general public how they felt about transit and what they thought the community's transit needs were. We also held, held five public workshops. These included, we went to the farmer's market on Anna Maria Island, we went to Manatee Public Beach, a couple of the bus stops and transfer centers, and also Red Barn Flea Market. We just talked to the public about the TDP and encouraged them to take our online survey. We talked to some community leaders, some of the municipality mayors. I think we talked to one or two county commissioners as well. We held a short discussion group workshop with the Citizen Advisory Committee in May. And we also talked to some of the bus operators, since they're the ones out there actually driving the buses and interacting with the riders on a daily basis. Overall, we actually engaged over 1,700 people during this process. For the most part, most everyone we talked to agreed that focus should be on implementing improvements to existing services, so increasing frequency. A majority of MCAT's routes run every 60 minutes, with the exception of a few routes. They wanted later service hours. Many of the, the routes run from, run until 7:30, 8 o'clock, and people wanted the routes to run at least to 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. The next priority were new services, services out to new areas or underserved areas, and then the last one was implementing Sunday service. So after putting together all of our analysis and our outreach results, we created a list of transit needs. And at this point, the list was financially unconstrained, so it did not take any financials into consideration. And these needs include enhanced frequency, added connection, regional connections, adding some more on-demand transit zones, and expanding the service area. And in this map, you can see these needs from a geographic perspective, but, so, these are the service alternatives that we developed in order to address the needs we identified. So there are improvements to existing services, making Route 99 run every 20 minutes all day long. Currently, it's just during peak hours. Implementing 30-minute service on Routes 1, sorry, 1, 6, 8, and 16. Adding two additional morning and afternoon trips to Route 203, the route that goes from Bradenton into St. Pete and to the Veteran Services. Implementing Sunday service on Routes 1, 6, and 99, and then also implementing, sorry, and expanding weekday service to 10:00 p.m. on all routes. As far as new services, we identified three mobility-on-demand zones. Now, these zones are very similar to what MCAT already has up near the port in North County, and then also on Longboat Key. For these services, people can request a ride ahead of time from MCAT, and then the ride must, the trip must start in and end it within the identified zone. And these zones include North Lakewood Ranch area, the South Lakewood Ranch area, and into the University Transit Center, and then also there is a zone up in the Ellington Parish area. We also identified a need for Central Bradenton Circulator to connect some of the key, key activity centers in the downtown area and the Lee Com Park. And then we did include the water taxi service from Bradenton to Anna Maria Island, even though the service that is going to be starting up here soon and is going to be overseen by the Visitors Bureau for now, we wanted to go ahead and just include it in here in case somewhere down the line, there's a discussion of having MCAT overseeing those operations. We also identified some capital and infrastructure, technology, and policy recommendations. There's transit signal priority, so this technology can be used at typically congested intersections to give buses the priority at stoplights so that they can skip the traffic and maintain their on-time performance. There are some transfer station and bus stop infrastructure improvements, vehicle replacements and acquisitions, creating, or making the mobility-on-demand services an app-based service. Currently, people have to call MCAT to schedule a trip for the MOD services. And then we're also recommending a comprehensive operations analysis. This is a, MCAT could do this to kind of analyze the system at the route level and to see where any efficiencies can be made. So once this list was developed, we went ahead and evaluated them and ranked them, 1 through 10. This was based on public preference, so the outcomes of the outreach effort. We looked at connectivity, first-last-mile connections, and how many other connections they have to other routes or other regional connections. We looked at ridership potential, so this included three measures. We looked at ridership productivity, how they serve the traditional market, transit market, so those people who typically ride the bus. And then we looked at how they, how these services can also serve the choice riders. We then came up with a recommended implementation plan. Now, this plan does assume some financial constraints. So in, in 2024, we have the Comprehensive Operations Analysis being performed during this year, and also improving the frequencies on Route 99 and Route 6. In 2026, we recommend implementing some transit signal priority, specifically on US 41 for Route 99. In 2028, we have implementing Sunday service on Routes 1, 3, 6, and 99, and also implementing the Central Bradenton Circulator. And then in 2029, we recommend implementing one of the MOD zones, which, this particular one is the Lakewood Ranch North Zone. And then in 2032, we have adding additional trips to Route 203 to St. Petersburg, and in 2033, we have the other Lakewood Ranch MOD zone in the, the South Lakewood Ranch area, and includes the University Transfer Center. And then during this year, we also have ongoing infrastructure improvements, vehicle replacements, and marketing and outreach. And then for the unfunded. And then for the unfunded needs, we still have frequency improvements on one, eight, and sixteen. We weren't able to include extending services to ten P.M. or implementing the Ellington Parish MOD zone. And then we kept the water taxi under unfunded until there's further discussion on that. So this is what the costs came out to. There are including operating and capital costs. Sorry. A total of two-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars over the ten-year period. So this includes operating the existing system plus the new services we're recommending. And then the capital costs mostly include vehicle replacements. That's a very large chunk of the capital costs. And then you can see here, cost compared to revenues. We estimated, or we identified some discretionary grants that could possibly fund some of these improvements in order to balance out the budget here over the ten-year period. And you can see in the graph on the right, most of that is local funding. And that is because the state and federal grants require some local match. And so as far as what's next, we are asking for the board to adopt the TDP today so that we can submit it to FDOT before the September first deadline. And then, and then the outreach doesn't end today. MCAT can use the executive summary to continue the transit discussion and get people on board for the recommended improvements throughout, for the next few years. And with that, Chris and I can take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz and Ballard are on the board. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, it's a great report, so obviously it moved on. But we're not wed to these timelines, right, and priority order. I mean, that was a conversation we had during my briefing. I've talked to a lot of people on this. A lot of people have approached me about transit since I've put some focus on it. And, you know, I agree with the frequency thing. I honestly think the Route six thirty-minute frequency is a little more important than the ninety-nine. That's just my opinion. I get the ninety-nine is our number-one route. But I didn't realize Route six, which is basically the road back and, the route back and forth on Cortez is one hour turnaround. And it's almost pointless. Nobody's going to take that on purpose. You know, so that one needs to be trimmed down. But the thing, the two I hear, and we discussed this in the briefing, the two things that people always tell me is, one, on the weekends, I know we said weekdays, but on weekends, like Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, the later service, especially on the ninety-nine and the three that goes out to the beach, is important because people can't take the bus back from the airport. They fly in on, you know, they fly in too late, or they want to go out to the beach and then they want, you know, they're willing to take a bus, but they want to have dinner. They want to hang out, watch the sunset, but they can't get back. So that's a big one. And but, and the number-one thing I hear, and I know it's on here, and but it's also one of the cheapest, but we have it way out in twenty-eight, is Sunday service on select routes. Because nobody can get to church, nobody can get to the beach, no one can get to the airport, nobody can get downtown to a farmer's market. Like, people are off on Sundays. People want to take the bus and use our services. I know our roads aren't as crowded. It is not as critical in terms of beneficial from a congestion standpoint. But there are people that just prefer to take the bus or need to take the bus. They don't have vehicles. But they're stranded on Sundays, one of their off days, where they can run errands, get things done, enjoy what we have in Manatee County. And for less than three-hundred thousand dollars, to your point, you're basically talking the one back and forth down to Sarasota and the two that go out to the beach, down Cortez, Manatee Avenue, including Beach Express. I think that one needs to be implemented way sooner because I think it's going to be way more utilized, even if we do it for like ninety days. Do it during season, just to see. I think you're going to get more utilization out of that Sunday because it's the single biggest thing people tell me, is why is all of Manatee County shut down? Why are our libraries shut on Sunday? Why are our buses shut on Sunday? Everything's closed on Sunday. And it's one of the two days they have to actually do things in Manatee County. So I'd like to see that one prioritized, but otherwise, the report's great.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard?
So I had my presentation on this, or my briefing beforehand. And I did have a couple of, and I do think it's a great report, and I'm excited about a lot of the things that are being proposed, a lot of the efficiencies, you know, increased or decreased route times, all of those things. Sunday service, I think, is also really important. But being that the money is limited, I would like to see us focus more on making sure that people who have to use our transit system are served appropriately and efficiently, rather than saying, let's expand mobility on demand and things like that out to Lakewood Ranch and Parish for people who just think it might be kind of fun. I would really like to see mobility on demand expanded and prioritized for certain groups, particularly people in our disability community. I think that's really important. I've heard a lot about the handy bus system being slow, difficult to use, and they just need something that they can rely on. And, you know, if you're sight impaired, it's really your only option unless you have someone who's willing to drive you around. I would also like to see mobility on demand prioritized for people who are involved in drug court or dependency court because those people, they have to, you know, they have to be able to get to court. Right now, it's hours and hours and hours for them to be able to get to court, get back. Those are really the biggest things that I'd like to see, just really focusing on serving those people who need transit versus trying to expand to people who think it might be nice but don't rely on it. Because we do have a significant number of people who actually need it and rely on it regularly.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm next on the board. And I'm just going to attempt to shed a little bit of light on on-demand service for Lakewood Ranch and Longboat Key, which is my district. And the conversations I've had with the mayor and council out on Longboat Key, the on-demand out there is not serving residents. The on-demand is serving folks who live in town in you and I's district, but work out on Longboat Key. And they don't have a car to get out there to, you know, whether, you know, it's, they're cleaning hotels or Airbnbs or their staff and restaurants, that sort of thing. Those are the folks that are needing the on-demand service. And I think, yeah, and it's similar to Lakewood Ranch as well. I also agree with Commissioner Cruz about, I agree on about Sundays, and I really agree on that. And I also agree about the Route six line as well. And then for as far as expansion goes, which is more of a TDT revenue stream, more so than a revenue stream from transit, but expansion of, from two trolleys to three on the, was that Route one? Not sure what Route, the island, five, Route five, okay. So, yeah, going from two trolleys to three on the island. As we've heard, we have a parking problem out there. We have a traffic problem out there. The idea that it's coming every thirty minutes is not accurate because of traffic. And maybe it's just during peak hours that we would go to three trolleys and then back down to two. That's probably more of a conversation for Elliot when it comes to funding.
Chad Butt, so just to keep that in perspective, it is, currently runs three. Your target time during non-season is probably reasonably accurate at twenty minutes. Once you do get into season, you do get your issue. And then during the peak of the season, typically during March, some days we do put out a fourth trolley. And it doesn't necessarily run the entire route. What we do is when things get grouped up, one can get recycled and be held off to just try to space things out as equally as we can. There had been requests that we keep two north of Manatee and two south of Manatee. From an efficiency point of way view, that makes some sense, but it's difficult when you have somebody that got on at the AMI pier with the intention of, you don't want to make them transfer a vehicle to make it all the way down to Coquina. So we've struggled with that, but that's typically how we handle season on the trolley. We do run three every day.
No, I like that, then. I've just given different information. So you've already tackled this, and I appreciate it. And I agree with you. The way you're running it now with three at peak hours is ideal. And even if you went to four, I don't think you would beat twenty minutes, to be honest with you. It's just the rate at which traffic is moving out there at those times. Okay. Commissioner Satcher, you're next on the board, sir.
Thank you, sir. So can we go back to the slide? I think it's on your presentation as well as in our documents, on the population growth or time. Is that in your presentation as well, or is that just in mine on the computer? I'm not sure which screen I was looking at. I think they're both going up here.
Just on yours.
It's just on mine.
I do have, we can still talk about, I do have it here with me.
So I'll just verbally tell everyone what I'm looking at. And I know the clerk has this as well. So it shows, starting in two thousand, population in Manatee County, right at two sixty-four, two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. And then shows twenty twenty, right at three ninety-one. I think the census came in a little higher than that. And our numbers are maybe, I guess that would be the census, surely. But now, we are higher than that.
If we use the overhead, we can get that on the screen.
There you go.
Okay. So, you know, we're looking at, what is that, roughly a hundred-and-forty thousand increase? Do we know what areas, the bulk of that a hundred-and-forty thousand population increase is where that's occurred mostly?
This is only county-wide data. This is actually from Bieber, the business and research, economic research, sorry. Can't remember that.
I think if I remember right, when we redistricted and, you know, after the census, the old, you know, kind of Palmetto Center, I believe, had grown. The numbers of people in that in the ten years had gone up, I believe, okay, I've got to guess, but somewhere between three and six percent, you know. And I think that, so it was in sixty thousand some odd people. And then District one, the old District one, was at ninety-one thousand at that point when we redrew the lines. And the old Lakewood Ranch District was at ninety-four, I believe, when we redrew the lines. And District three was somewhere a little bit above the District two numbers, the old districts. Obviously, we drew the lines and equaled them out, which was a task, but worthwhile and worth doing. So I just wanted us to keep those things in mind as we make decisions moving forward as a county. There's been a lot of changes in our revenue and a lot of changes in our needs. And I think we do ourselves and our population a disservice. If we don't recognize where some of that comes into play. But that's all I have. I like this plan. Looks like a great plan. And I like Commissioner Ballard's ideas for expanding the on-demand service. I remember real early on, gosh, I'm starting to sound old. I remember a meeting that where we even spoke about kind of the Sarasota model, going to, I mean, basically all on-demand, or maybe they were just looking at it at that point. So anyway, I like those ideas and want to make it easier for people to be able to get to work and to get to places they need to do. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. Regarding all on-demand, they don't quite do that because they, you know, their main lines, obviously, are still, they're running transit buses. But I think particularly, and I had this conversation with staff, when it comes to a lot of our medical transports that we do, the numbers I was given, because I was also told there were two trolleys, but the numbers I was given said that seventy percent of the transports that we do for doctor's appointments, that sort of thing, are non-ambulatory. And so those are examples of where we could go to, say, a minivan, even if it included a wheelchair lift, that sort of thing. We could still do that. And you don't have to hire a CDL driver, you know, it just becomes cheaper in general, right? It's a less expensive vehicle to maintain and to operate. So that would be one area where I think we could make, I would like to see us sort of move in that direction, away from these larger vehicles that cost us more to operate and require a highly, more highly skilled driver, which, of course, is going to cost you more money as well. When it comes to transit out to Parish, I think really we want to focus on need. The need is primarily going to be in Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Ballard's districts. But then it's where those folks need to go from that point. Like, really, that's where your need is going to, your trips are going to originate. And I think the reason the island is included in there is because you're dealing with a awful lot of blue-collar workers who need to get to jobs that exist in the tourism industry that are located on the island. And there's, of course, jobs out in Lakewood Ranch as well. And in Parish, there just aren't a whole lot of employers out there that are employing those folks from those districts. So I think that's where, if the need is there, then of course I support it. But I think that's where we're running into trouble, is that there's not the need to get out there because I think most all of these trips are originating really from the urban core, is what I would assume. If I'm wrong, you know, of course, let me know. I was wrong about the trolleys, so. It was on the report. Commissioner Bearden, Satcher, and Cruz. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of questions. When it comes to the on-demand services, how many, I guess, vehicles are we currently running right now?
So when you say on-demand, are, the only thing that we're doing is by appointment-based, day before, so it's our true traditional paratransit. Typically, depending on the number of available operators, we'll have twenty-two to twenty-five vehicles on the road every day.
Okay.
Performing that wheelchair-style doorstep-to-doorstep delivery service. ADA and transportation disadvantaged is inclusive in that.
And how is that process being implemented? Is it, they have to make a phone call, or is it, and they have to set the appointment for them to be picked up?
Yes, sir. It's a reservation.
How far advance do they have to do that?
Transportation disadvantage requires the day before or earlier. You can do calendar trips of, to an extent. Might need to drag Chris back up here to correct me on that. It's a subscription trip so we can program. On Tuesdays at this time, I need this type of trip. Under the ADA side, we have a requirement that as long as they make the reservation, is it two hours? Up to two hours before. ADA has a different territory. It's only within the crap, half mile or three-quarter?
Three-quarter mile.
Three-quarter mile of the existing fixed route service. So that's for those people that can't traditionally use the fixed route bus due to their medical conditions. They can make a reservation up to two hours before their desired trip.
So if somebody forgets to, let's just say, twenty-four hours besides the ADA, then they just miss the trip to wherever they need to go, correct?
If we do not have that availability, yes, sir. Typically, typically between the two types of service, they are booked generally for that day, allowing our flexibility to, because we harshly governed on regulations of not being able to turn down those ADA-eligible trips.
Got it. So, I mean, as far as technology goes, do we have something to be able to maybe smooth out that process a little bit more within what we're currently doing right now today?
A lot of what we've talked about between here, and we covered a lot during the briefing, is a middle ground. We have focused our transportation disadvantaged service in Manatee County, really focused on the very immobile people that are typically either walkers or very slow at walking or already in wheelchairs. It's typically the services of who we focus on. They're going to dialysis, they're going to chemo, they're going to doctor appointments. They're usually in extreme need. There's another side of on the transportation disadvantage that we do try to, before we went free fare, was do discounted bus passes just because their disadvantage was they couldn't afford the monthly bus pass or things like that. But we also have just that other issue of you may not qualify as ADA disability-qualified, but it still might be quite a pain to walk a half mile or three-quarters of a mile to get to a bus route. Even though we, the urban core is covered with bus routes, there still are gaps in there that are up to a mile wide in certain areas. We, one of the things we heard from our briefings is that would be also one of those types of mobility on demands to supplement the urban core to make it extremely easy, that first mile, last mile, to get to the bus system so you can make the use of the fixed route. Not that you're in a wheelchair, it's just it's impractical for you to get to the bus stop, the nearest bus stop, maybe too far away from you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz? Okay, he is okay. We're going to open this item up to public comment since no one else is on the board. Anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding item number fifty-five on today's agenda, item number fifty-five? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. And we'll entertain motions on item number fifty-five. Madam Clerk, Commissioner Cruz has made a motion to approve item fifty-five. It's been seconded by Commissioner Turner. We've held public comment. No one's on the board for discussion at this time, so we can cast our votes now. And it's approved unanimously by a vote of seven. And it's approved unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right, moving on, we have already held item number 56, so we'll move on then to item number 57. This is Commissioner Agenda Items. Commissioner Satcher's item is 57, which is a presentation on Buffalo Creek Park Soccer Complex. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting. We were going over some of our legacy projects and some of the best ideas for one of the goals that we, I had in District One, and really it's a countywide goal. But some of the best ideas on how to make that happen came forward pretty late in the process. And so staff, Carmine and Tom are here. They're going to present what I am hoping is, what I believe is a great project that hopefully would have a lot of support from this board. So with that, if y'all could go ahead and talk about what we're proposing.
Commissioner's Tom Yager, Deputy Director of Property Management. Good afternoon. As Commissioner Satcher stated, we took a look at some opportunities in the Buffalo Creek area. What you're looking at now is you're looking at Buffalo Creek Park. At the bottom, you can see the cloverleaf of the baseball fields. And above that, there's a dark area that's approximately 20 acres, 20 to 24 acres that we identified after discussing with the Utilities Department. Some area out there that we might be able to use to put some soccer fields in. There's still some investigation that has to happen out there. We've got to do some surveys, check the wetlands, you know, the invasive species, those kinds of things. But that's the area that we're going to be talking about. Dave, if you could go to, oh, I've got it here, I'm sorry. So there's number, there's, so the, in the upper left-hand corner, that's the same area. You can see that we've placed, there's room on the area for four soccer fields. It also has right there, you know, shown right now, a restroom and pavilion. There's a restroom and a pavilion on the right-hand side near the parking lot that you can see in the dark space at the upper right-hand or upper center. And again, there's, you know, a lot of investigation that we're going to have to do. This is very preliminary. We haven't had any engineers involved or any architects involved at this point.
Do you have a general cost estimate?
I have an order of magnitude and it's somewhere between 12 and 14 and 1/2 million.
Okay. And there is 6 million in formerly, funds formerly known as ARP funds. Mr. Bishop, can you dialogue with me? Formerly known as ARP funds, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have currently have $6 million set aside for this. And then we, working with Sheila McLean, our CFO, we identified 5.45 million that was designated for Curiosity Creek. However, that was only the engineering. We don't have enough funding to build that out. So we are asking to take that money and move it over.
So you want to reallocate the 5.5 from Curiosity Creek over to this, which would give you 11 and 1/2?
Correct, sir.
Out of, what is, what was it again? I'm sorry.
We're right around between 12 and 1/2 and 14.
That's pretty darn close.
It's, yes, sir, it is, especially this early in the project. We also have the opportunity that if we don't build out all of it, we might be able to phase some smaller portions of that and allow us to move into, you know, another funding year.
I mean, personally, I, if we start moving forward with this and you come back to us and with a GMP, what, before or after Christmas? When could you come to us with a GMP?
It's going to be after Christmas.
After Christmas, okay. Say six months from now. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes, sir.
Okay. Personally, if you came back to us with six, in six months with a GMP and it was in that area, in that neighborhood, I would have no problem voting to find and allocate funds from another source to polish off the difference here, right? To make up the difference between the 11 and 5 and whatever your GMP is. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir. Molly White, please. I think Molly can speak to the importance of this because we actually want to jump into the synthetic turf arena. Can you explain how this will benefit the overall Buffalo Creek complex?
Yes, absolutely. Molly White, Deputy Director of Sports and Leisure Services. Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioners. You know, out in Buffalo Creek, we're bursting at the seams in every area and necessarily at the county. But utilizing this space and diving into the synthetic turf really gives a better opportunity to program the fields over 300 dates a year. We have to close the fields mostly for the entire summer for them to recover, get some rain and recoup. And that's still pushing and getting things started in the fall when we want the leagues and the kids to be able to play. There's also the aspect of the synthetic turf and the adult leagues where they're not tearing up the fields where the kids go to play. So utilizing this space to really dive into the opportunity of synthetic turf, add more playing fields and opportunities will be beneficial to everybody in the county.
Yeah, I love it. I love it. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I don't think we're voting on anything. There's nothing to vote on. But if you're just looking for guidance, if you could actually build this for what you say you can build it for, I'm 100% on board. I would vote for this. Be interested to see how you're going to build it for that price. But if you do, I think it's great and it's certainly needed, so I'm on board with it.
I think, I think we are looking for some kind of action here. Are you looking for a motion essentially directing staff to move forward? And, you know, with planning and bring us, bring the, bring back a GMP? Why don't you verbalize the motion you guys are looking for? And then Commissioner Satcher can say, so moved.
I believe we would be looking for guidance or approval to move forward to design and come back with a GMP sometime after the next six months.
I move to direct staff to bring forth design and a GMP as soon as possible.
I'll second that. And, well, Commissioner Turner seconded that. He beat me to it. Mr. Bishop, do you need direction on funding sources or you're good?
No, sir. We have the generational impact fee, generational funding already set aside. I do want to add one caveat. This is utility lands. We will be working with Sheila and the Bond Council to make sure we reimburse utility to make them whole. But our understanding is a very nominal price for this because it was purchased so long ago. But we do have to make the utility system whole.
Sure, okay. Commissioner Bearden?
No, I'm just, it's, it's interesting to me, you know, we're looking at, you know, synthetic turf. I know that Manatee High just put there and it was roughly around a million dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, 1.1.
Yeah, 1.1. So long-term, obviously, is going to save us significant amounts of money and it's going to look beautiful. So I'm all about it if it comes back and it's good to go, so.
Yeah, we did the fancy stuff that doesn't overheat and cause issues with having to cancel practices and games, even though we actually, it wasn't made for 97 degrees, so we actually had to cancel three practices. But, yeah, but even on the natural grass, it was still, it was still too hot. Okay, so let's open this to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the new planned Buffalo Creek Soccer Complex? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. There's no one on the board for discussion. We've held public comment. Motion by Commissioner Satcher to approve, seconded by Commissioner Turner. We can cast our votes now. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right, good, good day for Parrish, Commissioner Satcher.
Absolutely. Thank you very much to the board and to everyone and for the staff for working so hard. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Moving on to item number 58, which is Commissioner Cruz's item. 58 is discussion on safe haven baby boxes. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I put this on a bit ago and then I just saw the update to the work sessions. On September 19th, part of the work session is being expanded to discuss legislative priorities. So this possibly could have waited until then, but it's already on. It's fairly quick. Couple of months ago, I was at a speaking engagement at the Patriots. Somebody brought me a bunch of information about this. And so I started looking into it. Basically, in the state of Florida, we have safe haven laws which allow anybody who, who has a baby within a short window of time to turn that baby over without any questions asked so that the baby can be properly taken care of and adopted and doesn't end up in a bad situation. Some states have allowed safe haven baby boxes which go a step further. Instead of handing it over to a physical person, it gives you the opportunity to essentially put the baby into a climate-controlled box. An alarm goes off instantly. Somebody's there within minutes to get the baby out. We, the state of Florida doesn't have a law for it. However, Ocala does have a box. In this January, somebody used it. And so myself and Fire Chief Rigney from West Manatee, I've been looking into this. He started pulling a lot of numbers in terms of prices. I've informally polled probably half the fire chiefs. I talked to East Manatee, talked to Parrish, talked to South Manatee, talked to, obviously, Ben. All the fire chiefs that I've spoken to so far as a sample are 100% on board with using fire departments for this. The boxes are only like 15 grand each, fully, fully delivered, fully installed, ready to go in fire departments. They're only like $300 a year for monitoring. The key is whether or not we can do it ourselves or if we have to wait for the state. So part of this is a question to the county attorney. Ocala has one, but I don't get the sense we're allowed to. However, for, that's what, that's my understanding. Again, I'm not an attorney. That's why I'm directing this to Bill. Over last year, this past year in legislature, there was a bill for surrendered newborn infants bill. It was HB 899. It passed unanimously, 111 to 0 through the House to allow these baby boxes. But it failed in the Senate. It never made it to a vote. It died in rules. It went through two committees and died in rules. That was HB 870. So my first question was, well, obviously, is this something we're interested in? I mean, I think we should be. I mean, if we're trying to help babies after they're born, you know, this is a great opportunity. The fire department seemed to be on board with using their fire stations. It's very cost-effective. It's not that expensive to monitor. It's not even that expensive to install. My first question was to the attorney, can you look into whether or not we're allowed to do this now? If we are not allowed to do it now, I would like to ask either now or on September 19th, to at least add this as one of our additional legislative priorities like we usually do to say, hey, we support this bill. Clearly, the House, bipartisan 111 to 0, supported it. It's a conversation with Senators Boyd and Gruders and others to make sure it gets through the Senate. Because I think this is a great opportunity to do something good for babies once they're born and for mothers that are in a bad situation. It's positive for everyone. It's cost-effective. And I think Manatee County would look good taking the lead in the state of Florida, making a proactive attempt of installing these. And we've got the support from the fire departments.
Mr. Clegg?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cruz, we can certainly look at it. There is a, under Florida Home Rule Law, there's some inherent authority for local governments to do things for the public health, safety, and welfare. So unless the law says we can't do it, I would start with, yes, we can, but we want to check first just to make sure. So we have some due diligence to do, but as long as no one on the board has an objection, I'm happy to do that.
How much is a baby box? Just curious?
Like I said, they're all in. It's, I believe the number was 16 technically. I rounded to 15. 16 grand. That includes delivery and full installation, top to bottom. And then it's $300 a year for monitoring and maintenance. So it costs nothing.
Do you know how many, Christian Bearden's asking, do you know how many you might, we might need?
I would assume the easy thing is, I think, if you were a mother and you were stressed out to a point where you're trying to essentially get rid of your newborn baby, then I don't know if you want to go online and figure out which fire departments have a box. For 15 grand, I'd rather just find the funds and put them in all of them. There may be state grants for this. There may be inter-local agreements that we can do with other people, you know, for the fire departments within the city of Bradenton or Palmetto. Maybe they can, they can handle theirs. I would, I would think, you know, there's been, what number did I pull up? There was, well, the fire departments would be basically monitoring it for us. They have to be, they could only be put in place with this 24-hour attention. Like there has to be people stationed 24 hours. There has been 361 newborns surrendered, surrendered under the safe, the safe haven laws since 2000, since 2000. But then an additional 63 have been surrendered in unsafe locations. And there's been 120 surrendered in boxes in the country since 2016, which is about one a month throughout the country. But it's still one a month. I mean, if you save one baby, it's like, what? For every single fire department, it's maybe $500,000 if we put every single fire department? If one baby is surrendered once in the next decade?
Sure.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay. All right, Commissioner Ballard?
So I, I think it's a great idea. I love it. You know, I'm just kind of briefly looking at the statute. It is kind of unclear as to whether it has to be, whether the baby has to be physically handed over to a person. So we'll just rely on the county attorney to tell us what is acceptable in that regard. But if it's not currently legal under Florida law, I'd agree with you that we add it to our legislative priorities. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, are you looking for, okay, so we're just looking for nodding heads. Does anyone object to Commissioner Cruz's idea in having county attorney move forward? Okay.
I don't need a motion, Commissioner.
You don't need a motion. You have bobbing heads. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Then we're going to move on to the next item, number 59, which is discussion on finalists for county administrator. This is a county attorney item.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clegg?
Mr. Chairman, once again, we're here to talk about the county administrator position. And once again, Mr. Rick Connor is here from the consultant. And as we discussed on Friday, if the board is comfortable with moving the process forward today, then you can begin narrowing down candidates or select a candidate. The consultant does have a recommended way forward. And Mr. Connor, I will ask you to come up and address the board with your recommendation. But I want to emphasize, that's not the only way you could do it. This is just the way that they have used in, with other clients in the past. So, Mr. Connor, if you would, please.
Thank you. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity again to, to work with you on this project. We have forms that are available.
State your name for the record, sir.
Sorry. Rick Connor with Colin Benziger and Associates. Should have thought of that. We have forms for you to use that are similar to the ones we use to narrow the field from nine to five, ultimately four. And we would suggest the same process again. There was a question that came up, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Bearden or Commissioner Turner, brought up a good question, I believe it was Commissioner Turner. What happens if we don't, if you're unable to see a clear consensus early on? One of the other options that I neglected to mention, we may not need it, but just wanted to make you aware. Another good option is if each of the four candidates get votes, to then take the lowest ranking, I don't want to say that because they're all excellent candidates, but the lowest scoring candidate, take them out of the mix, revote, see how the votes are redistributed. I guess this is like the Alaska Senate vote or whatever it is. But there are other options that we can suggest as we go, and they seem to work pretty well. So at this point, I recommend, you're in charge, you tell us what you want to do. But our recommendation is take the ballots, score your highest or your first choice as a number one, your second choice as a number two, and then leave the other two candidates' boxes blank. And then we've got a form that I'd be glad to, that I would be glad to give you a copy of, which will allow you to see what the scores look like after the process. We will be marking them as you, as you wrote, so.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, just to conclude, if the board is comfortable proceeding that way, I do have physical ballots and I'm happy to pass them down as long as that's what you all are comfortable doing.
Perfect. We have Satcher, Van Austinbridge, and Bearden on the board. So let's go, let's sort of start the discussion.
Yes, sir.
See where we go. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, we went through the options on what we could do as far as maybe narrowing down a list or, you know, filling the forms out. But I would assume, I mean, we don't have to make a decision today, now, or never, or even next meeting or never. I mean, personally, now you're not the perfect choice of words, but, but in the foreseeable, in the next couple of weeks. I don't know. I just, obviously, it's an awkward question or an awkward situation. But I personally, I don't know that I'm confident enough that we have someone that, I mean, I want to just be able to say, to, you know, to know, this is the guy, this is the lady, this is who we need moving forward. And it's a big step up, you know? And so, and I don't, you know, in my conversations, I don't even have the same conversation with different people in the public. They'll call and one will talk about one person and somebody else will talk about a different person. And, and I just am not seeing like a consensus personally. So I'm hoping, you know, that we can delay at least, you know, for, for the foreseeable, you know, couple of weeks or months, this decision. I don't know where the board is on it, but that's where I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. I actually had a kind of in-depth conversation with the county attorney about this yesterday. I, I do have one person that I think is, well, I think, but I have one person who is my, my favorite of the four. But that said, I'm not, I'm not even stating their name, so I'm not willing to champion that person yet. I don't have anyone in this pool that is my, my solid choice, that I'm looking to, you know, gra-
to, you know, grab the flag and charge the hill for that person. Although, good candidates, I, there are lots of things about each of them that I liked. If, yeah, I just, I don't have one that I'm willing to charge the hill on at the moment. And maybe that means go back, I'm not sure what that means, maybe it's go back to the well. I'm not sure. But as of today, if, if handed ballots, I'm not, I'm not going to fill mine in, because I, I don't have anyone that I champion over the others, put it that way. Commissioner Bearden, Cruz, and then Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, based off this conversation that we're currently having right now, and going through all the candidates as well, we had some great candidates that were brought to us. But when it comes to this position, I got to be 100%. And I'm not currently 100% on the direction of where I want to go in regards to these particular candidates currently. And knowing the fact that we need somebody that's going to be here, that I'm comfortable with for the next, you know, four, five, six, seven years, for the longevity of whoever we bring onboard, I got to be 100%. And I'm just not quite there yet, based off the interviews and the interactions with all the candidates currently.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz and Ballard, sir?
Yeah, I'm going to disagree here. I mean, I've, here's the real, I know what you, you think you're going to get. You think someone's going to walk in here, and it's going to be the exact right person, with the exact right temperament, and the exact right personality, exact right ideology. And somehow, seven different people with seven different backgrounds and seven different beliefs are all going to coalesce around one person, and that person's going to be the exact right thing for seven different people with different personalities simultaneously. That person literally doesn't exist on this planet, because what's perfect for Commissioner Satcher is different than what's going to be perfect for Commissioner Ron and for Commissioner Alsh. You're never going to find somebody who is literally the perfect person for everybody. You got to find somebody who can steer a ship. We know this county, we know what we need, at least I believe I know what, what I would like, let's put it that way. You're not going to find somebody perfect. No person who's ever been a county administrator in this county or any other county has been perfect. No commissioner has ever been perfect. You, you find somebody who you believe can do the job. And, you know, when, when we put Scott in, nobody thought he was perfect. When we switched over from Scott and had to put an interim in with, with Mr. Washington, nobody thought he was perfect, but we thought he was going to do the job that was necessary for this county, and I believe he did. Sometime in the middle of that, we were going to just randomly switch that interim out to a different interim. There wasn't even dialogue or discussion about that person. But the assumption was, let's just move to a next person. When Mr. Washington left, we, we put another interim in. So far, the county as a whole hasn't collapsed. I mean, I, I thought we had very good candidates. You know, I, I was very happy with the, the pool of candidates we've got. I was very happy with the pool of candidates that we collectively decided to bring in to speak. I think we all worked very well together, looking and narrowing from 54 or 57, or whatever it was, down to five, which became four. You know, we, we all worked in unison with that, we were all happy. One person had seven out of seven to be recommended to come down here for an interview. That's unheard of on this board. To have seven out of seven with all the different personalities and views of what you want, every single person said, that person needs to come down and speak to us. Then, we had all the interviews. And on Friday, when we informally did a straw poll, six of the seven of us gave our opinion after having all the paperwork, and then in-depth conversations, and seeing them at the event on Thursday night, and then having panel discussions, and of the six who gave our question, five of the six said the same person as one of their top two. One person up here said, that was the only person they were even going to put on their ballot they were so confident. This is the most universally agreeable thing this board has ever done. And I've spoke over this weekend to, and, and as well as yesterday, as well as today, to multiple people on the staff from director level and up, to get their opinion, because they were intimately involved in this, because they were doing the tours, and they were, and 100% of the staff I spoke to all said the exact same name. So, we somehow found a guy in the entire country somehow, to get to the resume stage, to get to the interview stage, to get through the interview stage, to have, have seven of seven of us bring him here, five of six of us say that he's clearly in the top two, and 100% of the staff all say that same person. Where, I mean, we could say, we certainly can't kick it down the road weeks, that doesn't exist, because it'll be the same people. You would have to reopen the entire application process, presumably to the same people who could have applied previously. So, you may just end up with the exact same applicants, or the second-tier applicants that say, I wasn't going to apply the first time, but I might as well apply now because they reopened it. So I don't know if you're going to inherently get a better pool. And then we've got to start this whole process over, which took months. So now we're talking more months with, with an interim here, who graciously stepped in to do that role while trying to do other jobs here in this county, to start this process over, under some assumption, we're going to find the exact right person next time, while simultaneously losing people that I thought were very qualified this time. I, I hear what you're saying, and you can all do what you want, but I think, you don't want to say names? Andrew Butterfield was by far the best candidate we had. I liked Lee Smith, I liked all of them. But Butterfield was the best one. Butterfield is from St. Pete Beach, he understands the area, he works in government, but has extensive military experience, he's had experience overseeing huge budgets and huge groups of people. His, his role and his temperament is to steer a ship and allow smart people who are directors of our departments and deputies of our departments to do their job. That's what this board needs, that's what this county needs, that's what the staff needs, and he was going to bring that, and I think he was going to bring it extremely well. All the staff liked him, everyone on this board liked him before interviews, for the most part, everyone on this board liked him after interviews. You guys can all do what you want, it's a majority vote up here, but I believe that Andrew Butterfield was the best candidate we are going to see, and that's who I was going to vote for, and is the only person I was going to vote for. And I assumed when I walked in here, that's who we were going to end up with at the end of the day.
All right, Commissioner Cruz likes Butterfield. Commissioner Ballard, you're next on the board.
So, like Commissioner Cruz, I came in here ready to make a decision today. I think that we have good candidates. I think we have one particularly good candidate. I, I think if we wait a few weeks, these candidates that we have right now, they're up for other jobs in other counties. We'll lose these candidates. They, they will get hired other places, and that's fine, if, if that's the route that we want to take. Like Commissioner Cruz said, we have, we have Charlie, who is doing an absolutely fabulous job, but he doesn't want the job. So, I, I'm loath to leave him doing a job that he doesn't want to do for longer than we have to. I, I, I think that Commissioner Cruz made a great point. We're, we're going to end up, if, if we come back, open it up, we're going to end up with pretty much the very same candidates. There are not, there is only a finite number of people with the right skill set who are looking for the job at this time. So, I, I just, I don't know what we think we're going to get if we start over.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm next on the board. To address Commissioner Cruz's comments about the perfect candidate, I'm not in, under the illusion that there's a perfect person for all seven of us out there. You need a majority vote to pick someone. When we picked Hopes, it was a majority vote. I voted for him, not thinking he was perfect. Then, Lee Washington, we all voted for Lee Washington. I don't think any of us thought that Lee was perfect, but he, I was very confident in Lee, I knew that Lee could do the job, I felt that he was the right person, and so I voted for Lee. But now I'm, I'm looking at four, and I don't have that same feeling about any of the four. And it's an extremely important decision we're about to make, if we decide, well, regardless, whatever decision we make here is important. And, we're going to have to, as Commissioner Bearden said, that's going to be the person steering the ship for four to five years from this point going forward. And we have a tremendous amount of very impactful priorities that we have set for this county, and things that we're moving forward with, and that's going to be the person steering the ship and taking us through all of these projects and seeing them through to fruition, hopefully. And I, I'm not willing to settle. That's, that's just where I am. I'm, I'm not willing to settle on somebody. I mean, I get outvoted, and that, that's okay. But, right now, I don't have somebody in this pool that, like I said earlier, I don't have someone in the pool that I'm willing to champion. All right, we don't have anybody else on the board for discussion. Wait, who? Commissioner Satcher is on the board for discussion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a, a look into what I'm thinking. I've got a lot of things that I want to see accomplished, you know, and I think we all do. A lot of things on, in my mind, and agenda that I believe, you know, the citizens of Manatee County want to see come to pass. And I understand everybody, it takes a little while to get into any role. But I don't see even fast-forwarding two weeks, four weeks, right now, the person I'd want to call if I wanted to get something accomplished, you know, is sitting to my right, and, and not watching this online. And, and once again, what makes us all a little awkward is, great resumes, great people, and if we choose one of them, I'm looking forward to working with them. But right now, I'm not ready to, to make a major change without a better case for it coming forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'll just throw one comment in that I forgot to make, and that was that Commissioner Ballard's statement that these candidates are all going to get hired away if we don't act now, but then she also said that if we put this back out, we're going to get the same people again. Well, it sort of has to be one or the other, ma'am.
No, it doesn't.
Either they're all going to get hired away, or they're all going to still be in the pool.
No, we're not going to get our top four again. We're not going to get our top four again. They will get hired away, because they're other people's top four as well. We'll get some of them, 57 again, but they're not, we're not going to get those top four.
You'll, you'll get a new top four. You'll get a new top four. Turner and Bearden are on the, are in the speaking order.
Since this is the only place we can really discuss these things, so the, the three of you that are on the fence, is it, is it the thought that we start over from scratch, or do you need longer due diligence period? What's the thoughts on that?
I mean, I'd just assume go back to the well and start over, personally. Commissioner Satcher?
I mean, probably. Though, you know, my favorite of the four candidates, you know, good judging, I only have, you know, our comments and faces here on the dais to go by, but I don't know that I had even had a second vote on that person. So, yeah, I think going back to the well would probably be, you know, opening things back up would be the route I would want to go, prefer to go, I believe, at this point.
My favorite of the five withdrew, and it took us down to four. Commissioner Bearden?
I agree with that, I mean, going back to the well. But, I mean, we have a great situation right now, where we've had leaders actually step up into positions, right? And the county currently, from what I'm seeing, even with County Administrator Bishop currently right now, that everything's been moving smoothly, so we don't need to be in a rush to get somebody hired. You know, we really don't. I mean, this is, this is one of the biggest decisions that we have to make for this county moving forward. And I don't want to be pressured into making a decision currently, right now, if I don't feel comfortable with making that decision. Because we're talking millions and millions of dollars at stake, right? If we mess this up, so.
Commissioner Ballard?
I, I just wouldn't, I'm not asking Administrator Bishop his opinion on any particular candidate, but do you want to hang on to this job indefinitely as we restart a, a process of hiring?
How about, how about if we were to, would he be willing to stay on if we extend the process?
I know, I want to know if he wants to.
Yeah, but we have to word it properly, because we don't want to ask him if he wants it indefinitely, and then we hire somebody else who has somebody who said he wanted the job indefinitely.
Okay. Are you willing, are you willing to hang on indefinitely?
Well, not indefinitely, but until we complete the-
As we, as we restart this whole, long, drawn-out process, I want to know if he is, if he is excited about this, because in my, in my discussions, that is not the impression that I have.
Sir?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. As a Manatee County employee for 22 years, I get up every day with a passion to come here and make a difference. And I'd be honored to stay in this role to, to a point in time when you found the person that excites you and be in this seat permanently. I will tell you, with Deputy Counter DePaul, and soon, hopefully hired Brian Purnell, we have a great team in place. The 13 directors in place have the same passion that Mr. DePaul and I have, and you have a good team in place. And I think today alone, with the internships, the gopher turtles, the mitigation bank, just today was a snapshot of what we accomplished. So, I would be honored to stay in this role until you find a permanent individual.
Thank you, I love to hear that.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wow. There's been a lot of great discussion back and forth on, on this, and I too believe, you know, we had some, all great candidates that were, came before us. I have kind of two that I've been struggling with, but not ready to charge that hill with the one. I would want to maybe sit down with that person again, in a one-on-one, and maybe even a phone call to that person, and discuss some issues that I had. But we, we have a great team, and I'm not discounting what Commissioner Cruz has said. I mean, we don't want to delay this process, you know, forever, or whatever. I'm not a big champion of going back to the well. I do think that maybe if we bring, I think everybody had a top two, bring them back in. I know for some it's easy, for some it's not. And set them down with us again, in a one-on-one, or in a panel discussion, that would be great. But I, I think we have a great team right now, bringing on the third Deputy County Administrator. We're getting a lot of stuff done. I just don't want to rush into something that we have in the past. We've rushed into a lot of things with county administrators in the past, and it's come back to, to hurt us somewhat as, as a county. You know, so, for me, I'm just really struggling with the process of who I would like to nominate or would vote for number one. And if we're going to vote for number one today, or we're going to vote for, if it's four, and we're going to knock it down to two, or whatever that, that process is going to be, however the board goes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Turner?
Upon some more due diligence, you know, I did discover things in my private investigation, let's say, that, yeah, turn a PI. Well, let's say, I did some digging, and I, I did discover some things of concern that didn't come into play in our package. And so, I, I think I'm with Commissioner Ron, you know, maybe not necessarily a, a full restart, but maybe a little bit more time for the due diligence on my top two, just because I, you know, I did find some things over the last few days that I hadn't uncovered, or it wasn't uncovered before. So I think, to everybody's point, it is a very important role, it's a leadership role. It's, it's the person that's going to steer the ship and dictate, you know, help create the new culture. And so I don't think a little further due diligence is going to help us. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Cruz, we don't want to flap it out forever. I'm in agreement with that. But just a little more due diligence, I think, will do us a favor.
And I, I'm next on the board, and to a couple people's points. Again, I'm not willing to champion Butterfield, but when I made my list, he was at the top of it, but he didn't reach the threshold that, that I had for an administrator. But he's just up in St. Pete Beach. So to sort of the spirit of, let's, let's take a little more time and talk to these, to our favorites or our top choices a little more, I have no problem driving up, I don't, I'm not going to be able to do it this week, but I have no problem driving up to St. Pete Beach this weekend or, or next week, and meeting with Butterfield, or meeting him halfway in downtown St. Pete or something. Well, I could meet him halfway in downtown St. Pete, whatever he wants. But I'm not opposed to sitting down with Butterfield again and talking to him some more, to see if I become more comfortable, maybe he changes my mind. The process has felt very hurried, I will say that. And perhaps that's part of what's giving me some, you know, a little anxiety about making a decision so quickly. Commissioner Ron?
Mr. Chair, are you suggesting that we today break it down to, I mean, you, you said you're number one guy, and some of us have some other, other observations also, or, or as a board, should we break it down? I'm just asking opinions, not making a motion or anything like that, or is asking about the process, do we break it down to the final two, and say, these are our final two choices between the board? And then we go from there? You said Butterfield, I know Commissioner Cruz likes him, I like him, but, you know, there's some discussion I need to have to get to that point where you want to be at, like you always say, you know, being married and being pregnant. You know, do we, you know, do we want to get to, I mean, how do we get to that point next? We have four, is it wipe out two of them, here's our final two, we sit down with those final two, and that, and that's where we get to our feel-good point?
Sure, I wasn't-
How's that process, maybe the county attorney, the consultant can enlighten me How's that process, maybe the county attorney, the consultant can enlighten me a little bit, but is that where the process is supposed to go? Or are you looking for a final guy today? I mean, it's-
That is entirely up to the board, Commissioner Ron, how you want to proceed. And you've, you've talked about a number of different ways of approaching it. You'll need to find some consensus as a deliberate, deliberative body of elected officials, how you want to proceed. You could go back to the well, as you say, you could narrow it down to two candidates and do additional interviews and due diligence with them, or you could do something else.
Yeah, and I, your question to me, I was just suggesting that I personally, so Butterfield is my ranked number one out of the four, okay? And, but he doesn't, in my opinion, reach the threshold that I require, but I thought I would personally, I personally am willing, I think it's a good idea, to go up to, if we're going to prolong this, to go up to St. Pete, meet him, sit down with him, talk to him, and see if through some back and forth, some conversations, some meetings, if, if I can get him across the threshold that I, that I'm looking for, for an administrator. But I'm not sure that everybody's on one guy either, so I don't know what, I'm not suggesting that, that be the process, that everybody go have coffee and bagels with Butterfield, I'm just throwing it out there that that's what I think I should do to try and see if I can get him to the point where he's a viable candidate to me.
So, is the process, because we do not want to, you know, delay this forever. I'm fully confident in, you know, acting County Administrator Bishop and his abilities to do what we need him to do until we actually put a person in this seat. So, but we do need to decide on a, some of a process or vote or something, so we all know how to move forward and, and make a decision on what we're going to do. My only point was, do we break it down to the final two, and then say, these are our final two, and then we kind of talk to Butterfield, or talk to who the other, other second person would be? Or do we just say, hey, we're going to, we're going to, somebody's going to make a motion, we're going to delay this for however long?
We could just continue to the next meeting.
And, and our next meeting's, what, September 12th?
Right.
Is our next meeting? So is that, is that kind of what we want to do, is just take this process and say, I mean, if you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion. I mean-
Can I say?
You want, we have four commissioners on the board, you can make a motion at any time?
Well, I mean, I do want to hear other people's opinions before I would do that. I just think it's proper to, and how big this is for us, every commissioner should have the opportunity to have a voice in there.
Yes, sir. The speaking order is Bearden, Turner, Ballard, Satcher. Commissioner Bearden?
Mr. Chair, I think you're going to have at least a minimum of three commissioners on the board not even vote today.
Not even to narrow it down?
Not even to narrow it down, because we're not even a hundred percent yet. I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know, I think, I don't know, I mean, I'm not ready to even cast a, cast a vote, honestly, narrowing it down. I don't want to be stuck in that position right now, so.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Turner?
I guess my comments are along the same lines as Commissioner Ron. What's the, you know, what is the next step, since there's, you know, we're split on this? Can we get some kind of consensus on what the next step would be?
Commissioner Ballard?
So, I, I personally, I like the suggestion that, that you had, Chair, or that maybe Commissioner Ron had. I think we should try to narrow it down by two, and talk to those people a bit further. Just so everybody knows, my, I have one candidate, it's Butterfield, I'm ready to vote on him today. I don't know if anybody else has, you know, I'm willing to take more time, I'm willing to meet with him again, but he's, he's the only candidate that I'm confident in, and that I would want to hire.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was going to ask our consultant, how long is the process if we were to reopen? So if we were to allow other people that might be interested to put in a fresh application, how long does that, how long's the turnaround on that?
The beginning steps are already taken care of. We have a good brochure that we feel represents the community, and the feedback we've gotten is that that is, is the case. So that amount of time, those steps are already accomplished. The advertising, you, you've seen that process. And I, so to answer your question, as best I can, a month or plus or minus, there, we need to kind of sit back and think of what we're going to do. We need to look at, where are we going to find you, different set of candidates that we think are that qualified, that you're going to be very excited about? So, I'm hedging, but on purpose, and I'm confessing to it.
You said a month, that's from, you know, taking a look, changing the dates, and putting it out there, and then coming back with the list, all that's within a month?
Coming back with the list, not, not the complete process. And again, that's that. I would really like to think about it and spend some time with Colin, because, again, it's not just in the mechanics of this situation. We got to figure out what we're going to do about candidates. And if, if the whole purpose is to bring you a different group of highly qualified candidates, that's going to take a little bit of thinking and effort on our part. So, I, I'm not trying not to answer your question, I'm just not sure I can at, at the moment. We really need to talk about that. If I could, if I can kind of twist that just a little bit, one of the notes I made that the chair talked about, you all may feel this has been rushed, bless you, but you're the first group that's ever said, you're going too fast, instead of, you're going way too slow. All we ever hear is, you're going way too slow, and we think we've got it down to a really tight process. We're really proud of that, because the only thing we ever hear is, you're going too slow. We are glad to slow it down for you, that's the easy part. Speeding it up is the hard part. That's why I also want to think about answering your question about how long. So, if we have, if we have, just because of past experience of thousands of cases, knowing that everybody's interested in faster, 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 we did not intend to put you in a bad situation by doing that. It's just instinct of, that's all we ever hear. So, our apology, if we need to slow down, again, that's the easy part. As a suggestion, I can't tell you how many times we have had clients say, I wasn't too sure the first time. So we brought these people back to them to interview again, to talk to again, and, and their direction changed completely, sometimes negatively, sometimes very positively, but there was a, the consensus seemed to be more, their attitude changed a little bit, or a lot. So, as a suggestion to help you, and since we don't have to rush, it's not like you're saying yesterday, a suggestion would be, pick two people to bring back in here that you feel, you feel would be worth talking to again, and you're coming, that you might drive up to meet him. We can set it up to do this again, walk them through a process, and let you spend some time with them, and say, okay, now we're both a little more comfortable in our shoes of where we stand, I've had a chance to meet you and talk to you, I want to learn more. They're going to have a different attitude of, I'm not quite on, walking on eggshells now, they've shown some confidence in me, not enough, but they've shown some confidence in me. I can, I can let them know how I'm really approaching this. So, if you would like to set that up, we can do that, bring in a couple of people, let you spend some time seeing if you still feel the same way you do, if you feel even less supportive, or feel more supportive, then if that's, if that's not a positive experience, we'll start over. I think you've got a couple of good people there, and I'm not trying to convince you that's not my job, you all need to decide. It's entirely your, your choice and your decision. But I think you got some good people there, I think you were a little impressed. It might be worth the extra conversation, that's not much, that's not much trouble to, to make a great decision, so that's a thought.
Commissioner Cruz, like Commissioner Satcher's at all, sir?
I think I will, I'll go ahead and make a motion to bring, nobody's really mentioned a second candidate, so your voting process, the way it is set up, you'd end up with two, we'd have two top vote getters, assuming they're not a tie. Okay. So, I think I'll, I'll make a motion for us to go through the voting process, see who our top two are, bring them back, and not vote the day they come back. So we get to have a conversation without them in the room, or in the very next room, and decide where we're at.
We can, yeah, we can bring them back for interviews on a, on a non-meeting day.
Great idea.
Okay, is that what you mean? Okay.
That's a great idea.
And doesn't, is anyone wanting, okay, so first of all, I mean, I'm happy to second your motion. Does anybody want, is anyone wanting this to be a workshop and a public interview? Not seeing any heads, okay.
I think that's necessary.
Right, I don't either. And personally, I mean, I, I don't even necessarily want to meet with him in my office again, personally. I, I want to go to their turf, I really do, I want to go to their turf, where they're relaxed, and they're not running the gauntlet of commissioner by commissioner. In either way, just sit down, and have like a relaxed conversation and break bread, is the way I'd prefer to do it myself. Of course, everybody can do that however they like.
Chairman, could I make a suggestion then?
Mr. Clegg?
How about if the motion just says that the consultant be directed to arrange individual interviews with commissioners, and he can accommodate your individual preferences any way you like?
Sure, I think that's sort of implied, but, okay. Cruz, Ron, Bearden. Commissioner Cruz?
Ma'am, if that's what you all want to do, that's fine, but let's narrow it down, we don't need to have the same conversation with four people again. Starting over is just, to me, it makes absolutely no sense.
The motion's for two.
No, I know, I know. I was on the, I was on the board before we threw a motion out, I'm just saying, you know, the number, just so we're clear, because we don't know how to vote, saying it's going to be a month, that's not correct. I mean, you're saying that to be aggressive, and I appreciate the effort, but we had it open for six weeks last time, and we weren't seemingly happy with all of the candidates we got that time, that was six weeks, and that was the first round stuff. If you opened it up a second time, you're going to get a lesser tier of people who didn't think they were qualified the first time when it was open for a month and a half. So, thinking you're going to open it up for a month, and we're going to get flooded in with like the, the best candidates we've ever seen is ridiculous. So, well, let's be realistic of the timing, I really hope we can get to, I honestly think, if we voted right now, we would probably get four votes for who I believe is the correct candidate, if I made a motion to do it. I know there's at least two of us right now, I bet you I can probably get four, but I don't want us to be in a position where we're having four-three votes, or five-two votes on administrator. I'd rather get us to a point where we have a unanimous vote, I think that works better for the county, works better for the county administrator walking in. So, I'm okay if we're going to push this to September, to make sure everyone's comfortable, but, you know, I don't want this to be pushed to 2024, as we're still debating what we're going to do with the third batch of candidates we've asked for.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm not in favor of going back to the drawing board. I think we all have someone in mind. The person I have in mind, I really like them, I'm just not ready to ask them to the prom yet. Maybe I can get there, and, and a couple of conversations, but I would be in favor of, if that's what we want to do today, and the board votes that way, to vote on two, get meetings with them, and I agree with you, not in the building, because it's somewhat intimidating to sit in someone's office, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but I like, I like, you know, I like sitting with somebody on the back porch, having, you know, just having a conversation. And maybe, maybe the consultant can help us arrange those, however we want to do it, and maybe it only takes one conversation. So, I would be in favor of just doing the vote for two, and then going from there. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, everybody's not, I mean, everybody's not comfortable, I mean, I mean, that's kind of the consensus that I'm getting with the whole board, I mean, other than Mr. Cruz over there, Commissioner Cruz, you know, so I feel like I'm, I feel like that I'm having to make a decision that I don't want to make. So, the best way, can I make a motion right now?
No, there's one already on the floor.
I can't make one.
Sir, there's a motion on the floor, so you can't make a motion at this time. You can amend the motion on the floor.
I'd like to amend the motion on the floor.
Has it been seconded?
Yes, sir, I seconded the motion. Motion by Satcher, seconded by Van Austinbridge.
I like to, I like to amend the motion.
Hold on, he's amending the motion.
Okay. So, help me out with this county attorney, because I might need a little bit of help on this one.
Chair?
I'd like to amend the motion to make a decision right now, and appoint County Administrator Charlie Bishop as the permanent county administrator for Manatee County.
That's really a new motion, I think.
That is a new motion.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It was a creative try, I would be proud of it, Commissioner Bearden, but I don't think you can do that, and, and I also have to say, and I've done a lot of this, we really have to have a dialogue with Mr. Bishop first, before we can put him in that position.
If I have to make a decision today, that's my decision.
Well, it's also a very big decision for him, with all due respect, and so I, I would, you know, and I've known him for a long time, and I wouldn't be comfortable with the board doing that without us having that dialogue.
If I, no, no, Commissioner, Commissioner Bearden, if I could dialogue with you on this, and say, and tell you that, right now Butterfield would be the only name that I would put down. So, having heard you say that, I think when I vote, and I write down my top two, I'm going to write Butterfield and Bishop.
Okay.
As my top two. Commissioner Cruz, you're next on the board, sir.
Who'd have guessed? Yeah, I mean, I think if we're going to have this as a motion, we should have some, a definitive timeline, so everybody knows, as, as well as the candidates know. I mean, this shouldn't take a whole lot of time, I don't know why this is even taking past today. I mean, everyone's seemingly saying the same thing. I, I have my choice, which is the same choice as Commissioner Ron, same choice as Commissioner Van Austinbridge, same choice as Commissioner Ballard, always, as of today, it seems like a majority of the board's all in the same place, but we all need that one more conversation. I'll remind everyone that since last Friday, we've had their cell phone numbers, and they all sent us emails over the weekend, all but begging us to call them to have follow-up dialogue if we wanted more comfort and conversation. We could have had these conversations prior to, we knew this was coming up today. So, you know, so they're, they're clearly willing, to your point, he's right in St. Pete Beach, if we're going to make a motion to, to push this, I think it should be pushed to whatever that September 12th meeting is, or whatever, yeah, so that we have a defined time, so people can proactively go out, have the conversations they want to have, either get comfortable or not with, with these candidates, because if we come back here and say, nope, we're still not comfortable, and now we have to reopen the whole thing, and we're asking you to go slower this time? I mean, that, that's a long process, so let's, let's make sure we're finishing up this process, either successfully or unsuccessfully, in a timely manner. And I don't believe there was a timeline on this motion.
Okay, so I think all you were doing there, you give a great two-minute speech, sir, it just takes you ten minutes, but I think what you're asking for was to simply give a definitive timeline of September 12th. Is that what that was, all that was about? Okay. Commissioner Satcher, do you mind amending the motion to include a date of September 12th, which is our next meeting, for when we, for when we have this, we bring this back for discussion?
For just bringing it back on September 12th, for discussion.
The, the consultant brings in the two people that we vote for, whomever they may be, and we have our conversations, or we go see them on their turf and have these conversations, and then on the 12th, we come back to discuss it. The board can either decide at that time to move forward with a vote, or not to.
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with that, that's fine.
You don't have to be, it's your motion.
Yeah, I mean, okay, I'll just, maybe I'll speak just generally, if I seem reluctant and gun-shy, it's because I'm reluctant and gun-shy. And, and it's not from some sort of just, you know, looking for problems where they're not, it's because we've had, you know, deja vu all over again. I've, I've made votes on administrators that I was not comfortable with as the vote came up, and, you know, six months later, looked and nothing of my agenda was moving, and I don't know that anything of a lot of commissioners' agenda was moving, and so I regretted those votes when I wasn't comfortable with who, you know, with what we were offered with, or what was before us. So, I do think it's an important decision, as long as there's an option on the 12th, you know, if there's an if to it, are we going to move forward with our, our options at that time, then, then I'm fine with amending the motion to that.
Okay, and the seconder will agree, and again, it, it will be up to the board on that day, whether or not to, to vote or not. So, it's entirely up to the board, obviously. We're going to open this up to public comment, because there's no one that's on the board. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number fifty-nine, which is discussion of finalists for county administrators? Sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. John Banks, Manatee- John Banks, Manatee County. I too thought very highly of Mr. Butterfield when I first heard about him. I was very much looking forward to his interview on Friday. I was here Friday afternoon. That's really all I know about your candidates or the people I heard from on Friday and, and what they had to say. But I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard him say towards the end of his interview that he has zero experience with public finance. Anybody else hear that? I mean, I, I think that's a critical requirement of this position. And, you know, I just, I haven't heard anybody talk about that, so I just wanted to bring that up. I think it's an important issue. I haven't heard too many people talk about Mr. Smith from Chatham County. I'm not sure what the issue is there. It seems like he's a pretty strong candidate, I would think. So I haven't heard any negatives about him and I'm not privy, I haven't talked, you know, interviewed him. You guys may have more information, but I just wanted to present that, you know, my thoughts. I'm the only person in the audience, so I thought I'd provide that to you guys, just that little bit of input. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you for coming down. And I don't mind speaking to, to your comment that we are privy to more information, but I guess the thing is none of us is going to speak ill of any of the candidates, put it that way. I think that's a fair way to state that. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment at this time. We've held public comment, then, there's no one on the board for discussion. This motion is by Satcher, it's been seconded by Van Austinbridge, we can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. So now we'll just take a moment while the ballots are passed out so that everyone can write in their two choices. Thank you, sir. Ron is worried that people are going to cheat off of his ballot. 10 minutes, we're only, we only had to vote for two people. All right, well, he'll take a 10-minute recess. We're in recess. Okay, welcome back. The tallies are in.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready.
And we'll go to Mr. Clegg.
So, Mr. Chairman, each of you selected two candidates for another round of interviews without ranking them, and as I said last time, there are no secret ballots in Florida law. So I will read each commissioner's selection and then give you the total. Commissioner Ballard was Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Bishop. Commissioner Bearden was Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Bishop. Commissioner Cruz was Mr. Butterfield. Commissioner Ron was Mr. Butterfield. Commissioner Satcher was Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Dougherty. Commissioner Turner was Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Bishop. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge was Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Bishop. And so, the final tally that I have is seven for Butterfield, one for Dougherty, and I believe five for Bishop. Four. Four, okay, so...
You had 10 minutes? 10 minutes, and you got that wrong?
Off of somebody else's mathematics. So...
Goodness.
So, I have talked to Mr. Bishop during the recess, and that was part of the reason I wanted 10 minutes. The conversation went a little more quickly than I expected. But I did ask him, is he comfortable coming back and interviewing with you for the permanent position of County Administrator? I needed to have that conversation with him privately, out of respect for him, and he has indicated that he is. So, given the decision the board has just made, you will do a second round of interviews with Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Bishop. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. 10 minutes, though, and we still had a discrepancy.
Able to avoid math, so...
Well, I think Arizona's looking for a supervisor of elections. You might fit right in. So, they take 10 days, though. Give you a little more time. All right, enough razzing, the county attorney. Is everyone comfortable, then, with where we are? Okay. No issues here. Perfect. I think this is the last item on the agenda. Does anyone have any commissioner comments? Commissioner Satcher, we'll start with District One. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the vote today, excited about the, you know, the work going on at Buffalo Creek and moving up. Had a great town hall yesterday at Rocky Bluff, and people coming out concerned about. You know, we've got a lot of lights. The county's done a great job at changing their processes for lights, especially in District One, but I think all over the county, because the process is so long, waiting for masked arms and some of the different equipment. So they've started putting in temporary lights or interim lights. And so we just need more of those, because we've had multiple bad accidents at 675 in Rye. And we had to, you know, anyway, but a lot of places are getting those lights, and that one's on the list, top priority. And so I was glad that the public came out. Great to see everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. District Two, Commissioner Ron. Sorry, that's not Mr. Commissioner Ron. District Two, Commissioner Ballard.
Nothing to add today, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. District Three, GT Bray Park, the Wildcats had their jamboree, which is the, you know, sort of the preseason game, and they hosted, Parrish Storm was in. The East Manatee Bulldogs were at Bray, and I believe Venice Vikings were there as well. And they had thousands of kids there. Parks and Rec opened up the overflow parking lot there by the powers, the Coast Guard auxiliary station there, and it went, people were parking almost down to 59th Street. Pickleball was really hopping on Saturday as well. And it was just a lot of improvements to GT Bray that this board has supported and we're so appreciative of, and driving through Bray and seeing literally thousands of people enjoying the park on a Saturday, it was a great feeling. So I just want to thank everybody for that, and tell you that the park is being used, and it's truly appreciated by the community. We also had a town hall at the Utilities Building on Saturday, and it was a busy day for me on Saturday. It was town hall, Bray. But anyway, the town hall went well. It was very well attended. There was pretty good support. We got great feedback. I'll sit down with Mr. Clegg at some point and give him the feedback that the community had and the desires that they have for the property. And anyway, it went really well. It was very positive. And, excuse me, and then lastly, just remind people, in the last several weeks, we've had, every weekend, we've had accidents on the water in District Three, and it's people out there, you know, people going out just to have fun and enjoy the bay and enjoy the water, or enjoy the beach. Typically alcohol's involved, and so I just sort of remind people, I know, it's shocking, but just sort of remind people, you know, to make good choices and make smart decisions when you're out there. It's really hard for EMS to get around on the island and to get down the causeway to you. So just please make good choices. It's absolutely beautiful out there, especially on the weekends when the sun's shining and everybody's having fun. But we want everybody to go home safely as well, so please make good choices. District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No policy or funding matters. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, sir. District Five.
I have nothing to add.
All right, District Six.
Yes, so, you know, I've been doing a lot of different research on certain things. I'm working currently, which I'll be presenting to the board, right, a memorial park where we're going to have, I'm looking to put, you know, put at least, you know, 15-plus memorials on, there's 22 acres that is being allocated. I've been talking to Charlie about, that's right next to Buckeye. But also, I was also thinking of possibly bringing to the board, with the board's permission, a second option for homeless veterans as well. I had been talking to some organizations out there, like Purple Heart Homes and things of that nature, to also be able to provide homes for veteran families, right, for the homeless. So, and that was one thing that necessarily Tunnel to Towers weren't offering. It was just for like, single units and things like that. So, bringing a second option to 30 to 40 possible units is kind of what I'm looking at. And it's right up the road from Bay Pines, and it's right down the road from the port, which, you know, there's job, major job opportunities there, and FedEx facility. And just give us a couple options that are out there, because, you know, when we're making a large decision like this, we need to have a couple options, especially when we're talking millions of dollars. So I just figured I'd throw that out there to see what the temperature of the board was on that.
Are you making a motion, or you're just looking for just general direction and consensus?
I'm looking for general direction and consensus, and I would like to make that motion as well, right, to bring back to the board in a presentation, to see whether or not...
I don't think you need a motion. I don't think you need a motion for that. No, I think you can just get consensus on that.
Okay.
Too bad it's not by a UPS facility. They pay a lot better. Yeah, they pay a lot better. $170,000 for a driver. Okay, no one's on the board. Does anyone object to, okay? No, you have no objections, sir.
Hold on, what's that?
You have no objections.
Okay, awesome.
All right, anything else from District Six? Okay, District Seven? All right, nothing from District Seven. Mr. Clegg? No, sir. Mr. Bishop?
Just quickly, last Wednesday, we started an open house at D2, spearheaded by Commissioner Ballard, and that's a stand. Every Wednesday at 11:30, we meet at D2. We're meeting contractors. We're meeting nonprofits. We're meeting the fire marshal, hopefully tomorrow, so we get a head count on what the occupancy would be for those buildings. We've picked out paint colors, carpet samples. The project's moving forward. We're very excited.
Oh, yeah.
And finally, again, thank you for the confidence, and I appreciate the direction we're going. Thank you.
Ballard interior design is on the job.
Exactly, and if I could add something to that, we have had different nonprofits coming in each week. I was able to speak with Catholic charities, so they're going to be coming this week. Safe Children Coalition will also be coming in to tour the facility.
Can I ask Commissioner Ballard one question?
Commissioner Ron.
Have you guys looked at Harvest House down in Sarasota?
Harvest House will be coming, not this week, but the next.
All right, you're on it. Just curious, the Baltimore thing, I dug around on that, and I'm very close with the Boyd family, and Milt May was hitting instructor for the Orioles minor league. And the Orioles are heavily involved with that facility and that organization. It's literally across the street from Camden Yards. So I got like, a big earful at dinner one night about it. So now I'm just kind of curious, when are you planning to go to Baltimore?
So, the Baltimore trip is scheduled. It's scheduled for the 27th through the 29th of September. And so, we're going to have, yeah, we're moving quick. Charlie's going, I'm going. Is Jimmy Crutchfield going?
Yeah, Jimmy Crutchfield, Jeff, and I believe Maria.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So we've got a great crew who...
That's the best answer I could have asked for, so I will report that back. All right. All right, anyone else? All right, we're adjourned.